Chief, first order of today's business is the adoption of the minutes from our November the 26th council meeting. Looking for a motion moved by Councilor Morocco, seconded by Councilor Gates. Any discussion to the motion? Yes, Councilor Gates?
I'd just like to follow up on a motion that I brought forward last week around rail safety. Again, there's an article in the Sunday Star on December 8th. It talks about how this rail cargo stays secret under Ottawa's new regulations. Only a select officials get the details of dangerous shipments and only after the fact. And I brought that up last year, it talks here. The new Federation rules force companies shipping dangerous goods by rail to Canadian towns and cities to tell local emergency responders about. But the information will only be shared after the fact, and that's a concern under the select few of officials sworn, and this is interesting, the confidentiality. Fred Miller, a U.S. consultant on chemical safety and railroad transport, calls the reasoning completely nonsense. And a mayor out of Ajax, Steve Parrish, argued that people have the right to know what's being moved through their community. So it is, it is a big issue, it continues to be a big issue, and with the chemicals that are being shipped right through the heart of Niagara Falls, certainly hope that when FDM comes here in the spring, that that's a big issue coming from Niagara Falls. So, thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other comments on the minutes? Seeing none, we'll call the vote, all those in favor. Okay, and that's unanimous, thank you. And next up, disclosures of pecuniary interest. Councilor Iannoni?
Thank you, checks 368-692 and 368-783, these are for members of my family.
Okay. Any other disclosures? Okay, and I have check number 368-846, a check made to myself. Councilor Morocco?
Uh, I have check number, um, sorry, 368-718, to myself.
Okay, you've got that one? Any other disclosures? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the reports. And for first report, building bylaw, we're gonna ask the clerk to introduce the report.
Your worship, the first report is an update to the building permit fees, and we've treated this similar to the way we treat our planning public meetings. So notice was given in the Niagara Falls review on Tuesday, November 19th. We also posted notice on the city website, and in your packages and on your tables are copies of the building bulletin that was created by our building department. And that was sent to over 100 contacts within the building services database, also to the Niagara Construction Association and the Niagara Home Builders Association. So Mr. Menard, our chief building official, will do a presentation, and then subsequent to that presentation, if there's any in the, anyone in the gallery who wishes to speak, the mayor can come, call them forward at that time.
Okay, that's great, Mr. Menard. Thank you. Saw your mother today, by the way, met your mother.
Yeah. So we have the presentation on the screen, and I presented the mention within here to complement the report that supported the statement. The basis of the current fees, they've been in place since January of 2008. The building code requires that fees are to be based on the cost to administer and enforce the building code act, and that alone. It is intended to have no levy impact to the residents of municipalities, ensuring that the common taxpayer is not subsidized in building development, and that it's paid for through the building permit program. Cost recovery within the city of Niagara Falls is no longer being a fee, and hasn't been for a number of years. And even though we're experiencing high levels of particularly residential development, we are still not recovering our costs. So before you, on the screen, you'll see comparisons, per square meter cost, for several area municipalities of similar sized boats. You'll see that our fees are significantly less in most categories than the others comparable. What I will show in the next few sections of slide, not necessarily change, but the fees as proposed will pop up. So you'll see how January 1, the impact would be, and we'll show the comparison across the board. July 1 as proposed. January 1, 2015 as proposed. July 1, 2015 as proposed. And then finally, January 1, 2015 as proposed. And as you can see in particular, I wanna draw a comparison between the residential rates and captains, and the residential rate as of January 1, 2015 in Niagara Falls would be a penny over what they're charging today for residential rates. So that indicates to me that the fees as proposed are not unreasonable for the, for the market to bear, and do seem to be quite in line with what other municipalities in our region are charging. What this slide shows is the representation of that information that was coming forward on the previous slide. So this shows the comparison over, over the five segments on a six month term. And then what's actually proposed within the, within the bylaw itself or within the report is a five-year plan to beyond January 1, 2016, if we look at January 1, 2017 and January 1, 2018, whereby the increase of the CPI is up 2%. To show what the impact would be on a, on a average home, an average home would be roughly 1,500 square feet, 140 square meters, because we are a metric here in Canada, so we say a square meter. So 140 square meters currently would cost roughly exactly $1,418.25, just for, this is the permit fee component alone, not the bonus charge. And then at the end of, when January 1, 2015 comes into play, you can see it's roughly $200, $200 and change higher. So that's not just an increase over a three-year term. Similarly, this is the proposed increases as they would relate to a typical 10,000 square feet scale project. So it seems that currently we're charging just under $12,000 of the cost there for the building permit fees, and then again roughly $2,000 in increase. So what we've based it on is a 3% increase at each of the individual phases to phase it in. Our original review, when we looked at our comparison between where we are now and where we should be and need to be for cost recovery, we should be looking at a 10 to 15% increase depending on speed. We felt that unrealistic moving forward with one significant increase, particularly coming with short notice to the building communities, so we thought a more patient approach would be more appropriate. Some of the other areas that I just wish to highlight is that what we've tried to do within the building bylaw itself is to identify certain, certain projects which we would, which were otherwise unclassified, to further help the applicants come forward in understanding what the fees may be, and to help staff in ensuring that we're fair and equal to all go to apply. So we've actually established two categories for solar panels, which are becoming more frequent and often, wind turbine structures, which we haven't seen a lot of in Niagara Falls, but are certainly becoming more common in our region, temporary stages, which are becoming a bigger issue in the building code, sunrooms, clariums, fireplaces, woodcoals, commercial kitchen hooks, these that are common in restaurant applications, but currently it's charged at cost instruction, which could vary, and is unfair, because the computation of the instruction is not all that different. So we've proposed last fee, and similar to firework installation. Lastly, we've also proposed, in an effort to help facilitate some additional work fees after hours, and to establish, we initiated a conditional permit process, or simplified it, so we earlier this year with the, with the assigning of the responsibilities to the chief building officials to enter into the conditional permit. What we've done is, it's always been a policy of municipality to establish some sort of deposit, what we've done is actually incorporated in the bylaws to appear, and I put a vote to everyone, that the required deposit for conditional permit is 10% of the construction value, and then that value will be returned on full permit issuance. The last two amendments there, the off-hour inspection fee and off-hour planning examination fee, take the place of what was previously referred to as fast tracking. That was an unnecessary term, or unrealistic term, because fast tracking is not, it gave the wrong impression that we were putting those applications ahead or before others who were following the regular process. So what this does, is actually identify what it is in reality, and that if they wish to pay an additional fee for work to be done after hours, if staff are available or capable of doing that work, they will accommodate an additional rate. That's the end of my presentation. If you have any questions, let me, the mayor answer.
Any questions? Yes, Councilor Carrio?
Thank you, your worship. On page two, in the first paragraph, it talks about the regulations introduced by the bill allow for the building department to establish a reserve. On your projected, or your increases, are there any reserves based on your projections? Are there any reserves built into the increase?
There are no reserves built into the increase. Currently, we, we have a small reserve, which has been drawn on over the last number of years, because we're not reaching cost recoveries.
Okay.
The purpose of the reserve, as identified in the report, is to account for low distance construction, as we, all municipalities have faced over the last number of years, we've seen five years of development, and very low years of development. So it kinda speaks some values out of it, but we have been, it has been necessary to draw from that reserve over the last number of years.
But, but your new, your new rates don't build in a reserve, as talked about in this paragraph?
We're not building in a reserve.
Okay. 'Cause my concern was that if we did build in a reserve, we'd be penalizing people that are getting building permits now. That was a concern that I had, but as long as you're not, you answered my question.
We're not aiming for a reserve, well, we're aiming for cost recovery.
Okay.
Good, thank you. Councilor Thompson?
Yes, good report, and you look at it and you wonder, 208 was the last change. This should be done on a regular basis. I'm sure that you're gonna see all of those numbers increase in spite of the fact that you are predicting what it's gonna be, and fixing, all the other ones are gonna be going up, that's probably anyway, so we're probably still gonna be on the low side. And that doesn't make me unhappy, as long as we're getting our fees back. When I read the report, I, I thought, you know, why isn't there a comparison with other municipalities here? I'd like to see that, but you provided that in the presentation, which, which I appreciate. And the other thing that, when you're involved in, in public life, you get pressures from people all the time about building permits and whatever. I, I like the conditional permit, great idea, and gives people the opportunity to have their plans examined, that they're gonna pay for the overtime, it gives them an opportunity to pay for special services, and I think that's, that's really, when they come at you, you got an answer for them, to tell them what can happen. So I like the report. The only thing is, really, at this point, we're only approving up to July 1, 14. I think the new council would be responsible for having a, a report to increase the rates after this council term. Is that accurate, at this point?
No, it would not be necessary, just this bylaw compared. Anyway, I would move approval of the report. Okay, okay, I guess just before we do that, is there anyone in the gallery to speak to this issue? If, if you could just come to the microphone, that'd be great. You just state your name and your address, please. Welcome.
Gary Hodgson, 7211 Cambridge Street. I'm a professional engineer in Niagara Falls. Mr. Menard mentioned peaks and valleys, and I couldn't help think, why should this municipality or the building department be immune to peaks and valleys? That's a reflection of the economy, and it strikes me that maybe if the municipality was subject to these peaks and valleys that he is trying to iron out, you'd be more responsive to the problems in the municipality. That's my comment.
Yeah. Mr. Menard, do you have any comment or any feedback for that?
Well, like I said to, to Councilor earlier, we're not aiming for that, for that reserve, we're aiming for cost recovery. So, you know, there are, there are times where we're screening higher than normal volumes of, of development, and if that, and if that occurs consistently over a number of years, then we'll certainly come back and analyze, and we're not aiming to create surplus, we're aiming to, to see cost recovery. So if, if there is a large surplus in the current years, then we will look at scaling back the fees to accommodate that, we wouldn't, we wouldn't move forward with, with higher than that facility.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Are there, well, first off, we had a motion by Councilor Thompson, seconded by Councilor Iannoni, to move the recommendation, and I just had a couple of questions. One, first of all, well done on the graphics, too, that was nice. Did you write yourself, or did you? That was good, I liked that, that was, that was good, I liked the way that, very good. The other thing, I like the idea that there's an incentive to someone to build sooner rather than later, when you see the schedule, and you can build that into what you're doing, and you know, get it done now, don't land bank, don't sit on your developments. And my last part was a question for you, when you say off-hour rate, what's off-hours?
Off-hours is outside of 8:30 to 4:30 Monday to Friday.
8:30 to 4:30, okay.
That's by contract, our regular working hours for our office employees who go re-party. So anything beyond that time would be, so that time essentially in the applications of, and if, and if they, of the, the regular applicant, if they wish to be in the queue with the regular applicant, then we would absolutely review them in the queue. If they wanna go ahead of the queue, then it would be done after hours and only after hours.
So can I ask you a question? Currently, what happens if someone wants to do this after hours? Is there any mechanism to have someone come after hours?
Currently, currently there is a mechanism, but what is called in the bylaw is fast tracking, which I'm uneasy with, because it gives the impression to those that don't participate in fast tracking, that their application would be put aside for the purpose of others who have money per se, that are willing to pay the overtime rate. So what, what we're doing is renaming it to, to better identify what it actually is, and if those folks are willing to pay for the after-hours fee, then we will certainly do that after hours, but it's not putting aside the regular applicant.
Okay, got it. Yes, Councilor Gates?
Yes, a quick question here. In the summary report, it says, "In addition to fees established through the building permit by law, have to be fixed for the last five years whereby full recovery, cost recovery has not been able to be achieved." Could you tell me how much, how much hasn't been covered?
It can offhand, I can certainly provide that information to you after the fact, if you need to, but I know, I believe last year's contribution was somewhere in the realm of 100,000, that was taken from reserve to, in those permits to account for that, that non, non-achieving of cost recovery.
Okay, so you, you really can't tell me over the course of, during the time you're volunteering, you're saying 108,000?
Yep. Maybe I, yeah. I, we don't have that information right, right available, but we certainly can provide it to you. Just for your better clarification, the, the whole intention of the reserve plan is to kinda deal with the ebbs and flows of the economy, that's the intention of it. The also is to kinda build a wall around the, the building department, so that unlike other departments where there's not charges of other departments, now we have a mechanism by which we charge the department for some of the other services that the, the department provides, the city provides. And so certainly the idea is for the building department to generate enough fees that it doesn't impact the tax rate. And that's why there are times in the last number of years where we've added to the reserve, and there are times when we've taken from the reserve to make it balance.
And like we are trying to do, the subside of what Councilor Carrio says, is to try to get more to a balance, rather, if you have to get into reserve, that's great, but if you don't, you get to a balance.
I think what Mr. Menard, I think what Mr. Menard is saying is, is that the, the rates that we're projecting are not recouping where we actually believe that they should be. That if there is a reserve that, or a surplus that's generated, it's gonna be based on volume, as opposed to the pricing mechanism, 'cause there's two ways, it can be either price variance or a volume variance to result in a reserve increase. What we're suggesting, though, is that unlike other municipalities that have targeted a significant reserve, we're not doing that in this particular case, that maybe in a few years we'll revisit this and see where we are, where we're at, and take another look at it. But right now, I think Mr. Menard's report is just addressing the fact that we haven't had any price increases, and we're, we're starting to draw upon the reserve. Okay, thank you. Take, Councilor Carrio?
Not to belabor this point, your worship, but you could be confused by, when you talk about cost recovery, 'cause I think when someone comes in looking for a building permit, they don't mind paying what they think it costs to produce that permit. But if only one person came in for a building permit, and it cost $800,000 to run that department, I don't think that anyone expects that that building permit would cost $800,000. I know that's an exaggerated example, but I think cost recovery should just be what it costs to do that permit. Unfortunately, it's one of those things that we have to do, it's like the buses, they're obviously not gonna make us money, but we have to have them. We have to have a building department that can process building permits, but I'm not sure that we can really get to a total cost recovery, depending on how many building permits are coming.
Right. No, that's a, that's a good point, and I think what, what it is, is that we also invest a lot in our staff and that, I mean, the, the, the building department has specialized staff, and part of the, the intention, when the, the original Bill 124 came into effect back in 2006, 2005, it was certainly enacted to kinda regulate the entire province, where all the municipalities were in the same kinda boat. I think the amendments to the new, to the new legislation from the province continues to do that, and you're quite correct, if we only had one building permit, we'd be subsidizing it from, from rate payers. That's not what the intention is, the intention is for the fees to, to smooth out of the scale. Anything else? Okay, seeing no other comments, then we've got a motion on the floor to accept the recommendation, moved by Councilor Thompson, seconded by Councilor Iannoni, we'll call that vote, all those in favor. Okay, and that's unanimous. Thank you very much, Mr. Menard. Next item is CD 2013, plumbers license, and I've got Mr. Clerk, is your report?
Yes, your worship, I think the report's fairly straightforward, we're looking at repealing our plumbing license requirement, which appears to be a bit of a thing from a bygone era.
Okay, motion by Councilor Thompson, seconded by Councilor Morocco. Any discussion to this report? Seeing none, we call the vote, all those in favor. Okay, and that's unanimous, thank you for that. Next up, Ms. Morgenhauer, we have subject RC 2013-21, the Gale Center Glycol Repair Project. Would you like to report on this one?
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
At the June 11th council meeting, Matina Mechanical Limited was hired to complete the glycol repair project at the Gale Center. The project started July 15th, and at that time, we were shut down for a three-week time period while the ice was removed, so repairs could take place in the mechanical and in the refrigeration room. During this time period, we did relocate our users to Chippewa Arena. The facility reopened with ice in all four pads on Tuesday, August 6th, and Matina continued the work in the, the public spaces of the facility. All work was completed on the project as of October 4th, and I'm here tonight to report to you the final project cost, was $292,000. And with this project, Matina has provided the city a two-year warranty for labor services and materials, and we are pleased to say that we're up and running with, with no issues, and we anticipate that this will continue in the future.
Okay, do we have any questions from Ms. Morgenhauer? Councilor Mace?
Oh, your worship, just looking at the report, and it says that there are so many joints not properly put together, and everything, which proves to me, this basically isn't a warranty job, it's faulty workmanship. I don't think, when things, joints come apart and different things, it certainly isn't a warranty subject, and I know we said earlier we're gonna pursue that, and, and obviously we are, is that correct, Mr. Beeman?
Mr. Beeman?
Well, we are pursuing it, yes.
So we expect that should, should happen in the next few months, the next year, or how soon?
Yes, yes, it should be, it should, probably within two months, it'll be up and running.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the report? Councilor Gates?
I guess my first question would be to Mr. Beeman, just how much would you advise us to talk about the quality of work? If we're, if we're gonna get into a situation where we're going to maybe pursue this through the legal courts, we have to be really careful on what we say?
Yes, very. And yes, we are, as I commented to Councilor Mace, yes, we have instructed, I have been instructed to seek legal remedies, council has been retained to do this, and that, in a situation like that, it's wise not to say too much about the particulars of the case.
That's unfortunate, but, but I will, I will raise something in the report. The general contractor, I guess what I'd like to know is, is a line here that they repaired the ceiling and the walls, that were damaged during the inspection, and made repairs to the joints, no additional cost to the corporation, they should be paying a whole $300,000. That's what should be going on here, I mean, there's no secret of what transpired here. I guess my question is to, I don't know it's to Mr. Beeman, or to Mr. Todd, have we asked them to pay the bill? Or you can't ask that, or I shouldn't have asked it, and what, what do you want me to do, or? I, I was just going off the repair, no, I was just going off the report.
I, I can say to you that we, we have not approached them with the final amount. I can tell you that as we went into this contract back several months ago, that was certainly the approach that we took. But that, as you know, led us to engaging a different contractor, so I think maybe that answer, hopefully that answer is self-explanatory, but since we've had these final numbers in, we have not gone back and approached them yet.
Well, I certainly don't wanna jeopardize where we're headed, so I'll just sit down.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, moved by Councilor Iannoni, seconded by Councilor Morocco, all those in favor. Okay, and the, the report is received, thank you very much for that, Ms. Morgenhauer. Next on to the consent agenda, but first our clerk would like to comment on one of the items.
Yes, your worship, in your additions, there's an email between our planning department and the developer related to the report, PBD 2013-76, and in the related Queensway, Chippeway properties, so there's a note in the handouts about a modification to Condition 38, so when you, if you approve that report, it's with that modified Condition 38, which has been agreed to.
Okay, so what's the direction of council on the consent agenda? Moved by Councilor Peter Angeles, seconded by Councilor Carrio. Any specific item, just Councilor Iannoni?
The, 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 the,
The, Mr. Mayor, the way capital works is that all the capital projects are funded from one of our operating budgets or from other sources. If a project comes under budget, then the amount is, once it's closed off, it'll be transferred into the capital holding reserve, and then be available for use in other projects. So it's not a matter of an operating surplus, because it's not affected by the operating, it's not part of the operating budget, it's part of the capital budget, and as a result, it's there. Now, we do have other projects that are on the other side, so we do have winners and losers, and at the end, if you recall, we do have a project, we do bring a report back to talk about that, where we close out the projects, and council endorses the use of the money and funding of the projects that go over.
You know, the other thing is too, like I want to say, for instance, transportation, can we buy an extra bus that wasn't, like it says, over 232%, which was such a valuable bus, would that be probably?
In that particular case...
Bus come in early?
In that particular case, there was one additional bus that was for the VTS system. The bus was not funded under the grant, it was funded through the provincial gas tax, and it was more than what we had anticipated in that particular project. So that's why it's showing as a large variance.
Great, thanks very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other comments on that report? Okay, so do you want to make the motion, Counselor Mays? Okay, and seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo, that we move the report? Okay, thank you for that. All those in favor? Oh, Counselor Iannone, you just flicked your mic cover. Good shot. Next is Counselor Iannone's item, F 2013-66, municipal account.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Check 368735. It is to Dr. Ben Pang, and it's for fifty-one-hundred, sixteen-ninety-five, and it's a refund. Now, the last council report under account, there were also a number of checks to Dr. Pang, and I think the last account, it was seventeen-eighteen thousand dollars. So while the meeting was going on, I asked her, I said, "Why have we paid Dr. Pang so much?" This is fifty-one-hundred now. We used, he said, "We have a line item budget, Dr. Recruitment." I had thought we'd eliminated that, so I hadn't remembered us including that, but there did used to be a doctor recruitment committee that made the decisions, got the information, were told what the costs were to recruiting new doctors here. I have twenty-one, twenty-two thousand dollars in the span of two accounts, and I'd like to know how we're deciding, or how staff is deciding to pay doctors for that. I'd like to know why Dr. Pang has such a large amount, because if our budget was fifty thousand, Dr. Pang is at almost fifty percent of that fifty thousand. So I'd like to report back for the next meeting to talk to us about that doctor recruitment fund. I'd like to know how much, that's the only two I've caught, but I wasn't looking for Dr. Pang before, but I'd be interested to know how that doctor recruitment money is being decided on, how it's, but we used to have a committee of fifteen, twenty people. That was disbanded, yet we're still paying doctors' funds to come here. I don't even think, I asked him, Counselor Morocco, we're not even underfunded, under staff doctors now, so I'm a little concerned on that. So I'd like that to come back for the next council meeting, please.
Yep, certainly, Mr. Mayor and Counselor, we can certainly bring that back, as actually the first meeting of January is going to be a legislative meeting, we can address that in that time.
Okay, so we've got a motion by Counselor Iannone, seconded by Counselor Morocco, to bring forward a report from staff on the doctor recruitment, budget dispersment, and committee and status.
And I'd like to know what the funds were for. Like to know what we reimbursed Dr. Pang for, what did he purchase, what did we pay moving fees, what did we pay?
Okay, including itemization of dispersment?
Yes.
Okay, we can do that. Counselor Thompson, you wanted to talk to this?
No, because there were no names, I was going to second the motion.
Okay. Okay, so we've got, any other discussion to the motion? Seeing none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's passed unanimously as well.
Motion of the...
Uh, motion, oh, yeah, and Counselor Iannone, you make the motion on the accounts, we'll move that to consent agenda. Okay, moved by Counselor Iannone, seconded by Counselor Morocco. Call that vote, all those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous. Next up, is everyone's favorite part of the meeting, is mayor's reports. Save the morning, okay, counsel. Council meeting reminder, a meeting to the public that city. Council meetings resume in the new year. This is our last meeting of the year. A meeting begin at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, 5:00 PM. Our next meeting in the new year will be budget meeting on Tuesday, January the 14th, and our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, January the 28th, and we'll see what kind of suit that Jeff Holman will be wearing that day, and what kind of suspenders that Mr. Beeman will be wearing. That'll be the other thing that we're going to find out, so we'll just have to see. Well-dressed guys. Obituaries, we'd like to send out our sympathies to the family of the Monteleons, Nick Monteleone, brother of Sam who works at our municipal works department, and at the loss also of Maria Di Mario, mother of Tony Di Mario, of our municipal works department, who also passed away. Events that have happened, we had Angels Everywhere, the yearly event at Christ Church, the grand opening of Christina's Colors Facial Spa on John Street facing Portage Road, grand opening of Inspire Health Niagara, 6100 Thorlstone Road in the Dow Plaza. I was joined by Counselors Gates and Morocco, where they had a homeopath naturopathic place that believes better to be proactive about your health and reactive. Niagara Concerts had their Montreal Guitar Trio, and I was joined by Counselor Gates for that event. The Medals of Dorchester had their pre-Christmas dinner, all their family and residents were there, and they got to listen to the Christmas tunes of Brad Boland, that was very nice. We had the grand opening of the Home Instead Senior Care Center on Thorlstone Road, and this is very interesting, it was their 1,000th location, I was joined by Counselor Morocco, and they help people stay in their homes longer. They're out of Arkansas, they were up here, and were, they brought all their senior co-founders and managers and owners, and they wanted to be here because it was their 1,000th opening, and they've been very successful with the baby boomer, as they call the tennis ball going through the garden hose. There's going to be a lot more of these types of businesses helping seniors, and keeping them to be more mobile and more independent. So that was a big step for their company, and nice that it happened in Niagara Falls. We had the mayor of Jinju, Korea, here, visiting the Festival of Lights. We had been over to visit with them as well, and what was really interesting, Counselor Morocco joined me on Saturday morning, we brought him to the Niagara Falls Hyundai dealership, which right now is the number one Hyundai dealership in all of Canada, and he came down to kind of acknowledge the success that they're having at their dealership, they're very proud, they're bidding out other dealerships in the GTA and much bigger markets, and they're working very, very hard. So it was kind of a congratulations. He came, along with him, the biggest TV network in all of Korea, KBS, and their newspaper came as well. So they all came down to acknowledge this event, it was a little bit of serendipity, but it was a real positive event, so we were really happy for him to be down here, and they had an outstanding visit, and he said it was an unbelievable experience to wake up to have the sun coming up over the falls with the mist. It was an event, an experience he said he'd never forget, and he was thrilled to take back with him our Niagara Ice wine, and a lot of our culture, and he got to see all of our displays that they gave us, the lantern displays, wrote the Niagara Parks Commission, which were quite beautiful. So it was nice to have their big group come here to visit and give a return visit. Also, there was a memorial dinner dance for Mike Credico, Big Mike, at John Michaels Banquet Hall, where they announced they will be opening up a thrift store in his name, and we're thrilled that they're going to be doing this to be a kind of memorial to all the great things he's done in the community. At the Scotia Centre this weekend, we had Niagara Falls Sunrise Rotaries Art by the Falls, it was well attended, it was a great event. I got to get down there and see Santa, and see the different displays. As well, today, we had the 60th anniversary of Allstate Insurance Canada. They've been in Canada for 60 years now, and in Niagara Falls for 40. Thank you to council members who represented the city at different events, Counselor Gates for being at the Menora Lighting Ceremony, and to Counselor Gates, Morocco, Ontario, for being at the Niagara Falls Community Kitchen Come Dine With Us Event at the Skyline Tower. Events that are coming up now, Snow Buddies are needed, folks, we've got snow on the way, and if your son or your grandson or granddaughter wants volunteer hours, a great way to do it, we've coordinated through all the schools so they can get their hours shoveling for seniors to get to their car, to get to the bus stop, to help them, it's called Snow Buddies, and you can go on the Niagara Falls website, niagarafalls.ca, to apply. So we encourage everyone to help your neighbor and get registered with Snow Buddies. City of Niagara Falls Culture Plan is on now, we invite everyone to take the Culture Plan survey, that's on the City of Niagara Falls website, again, niagarafalls.ca, and that's until December the 20th. The Winter Festival of Lights is now on until the end of January, the TD Rink at the Brink is now open, make sure you get your skates, if you don't have them, you can rent them down there, skate at the Brink of the Falls. This Friday is the 23rd Annual Good News Breakfast, takes place Friday the 13th at the Carncroft on Lundie's Lane from 6:00 AM until 10:00 AM, and it's hosted by Vista Radio 105.1 and 101.1. You'll be there as the city helps fill buses for project share. Grand opening this coming week will be Easy Street Sandwiches and Treats, which will be McLeod at Taylor on Saturday, December the 14th, 11:50 AM. Grand opening of The Boutique, which will be a women's fashion accessory store, 7279 Lundie's Lane, will take place this Saturday, December the 14th. Reminder to everyone that likes a good Christmas concert, Niagara Concerts will have their Big Band Christmas this Saturday, the 14th, the Scotia Bank Centre. If you're interested also in buying a present for someone for Christmas for the holidays, not sure where to get them, it's a great idea to think about buying them a serious concert pass to Niagara Concerts, five concerts for a hundred dollars, it's great value. There's only three shows left, they're now selling them for eighty dollars for the last three shows of the season, including the Christmas show. So if you're looking for someone, that or Lind's Farm downtown at the Seneca also is a great investment for great entertainment, I promise you, you won't be disappointed. Last announcement is Russell Seabird will have a meet and greet, the national soccer player who hails from Niagara Falls, plays for the Vancouver Whitecaps, he's going to be at the German Village on Thursday, December the 19th at 6:30 PM. This is hosted by family and friends, it's open to the public, and anyone that wants to get an autograph should come down and check that out. Oh, and one, how could I forget, Niagara Falls Transit Route changes are going to be implemented in January, and if you can see on the screen there, we've got a fancy graphic, Carl, not to be outdone by our building department, has got a very interesting, good one, Carl. Did you do this? No. Exciting new changes to enhance the system for now and the future, beginning January the 5th, you can ride Niagara Falls Transit buses for free for the entire week, that's right, free, right now, if you right now sign up, January 5th through the 11th, you can ride any of our transit buses for free. There are 30-day pass holders, you can come into Niagara Falls Transit and get your seven days added to your pass for free. We're encouraging everyone to get out there in January and try our new system. We're looking for your feedback, and please, check out niagarafalls.ca for all feedback on the new transit route changes. Mr. Jen, is anything you wanted to add to this?
Yeah, if I could just add, because it's a complete change to the system, we're going to have ambassadors on the bus starting today, they're going to ride around, and they're going to give people information on the new routing, and to make sure people are comfortable when they get onto the new routing and start of the new year. So they're giving them information, they're also giving out, if I could just, on the bus, they're going to give the new rider's guide, which is listed here, and then companions to the rider's guide, which explains all the new information about the new routing system.
That's great, well, that's really helpful, I understand Counselor Iannone is going to be on the bus with Henny O'Leary, is that true?
[laughing]
Oh, yeah. And also, it's really key that we add to our list is that New Year's Eve, maybe, Mr. Jen, could you maybe just enlighten us, you've added the service. New Year's Eve, as you know, folks, the last two years in a row, we've had the biggest show in all of Canada for New Year's Eve, and it continues to grow. This year, the talent is outstanding, so we've responded with our transit system. So two things, number one, there's massive gridlock, you cannot get around down there, no sense bringing a car, and secondly, if people want to indulge in the festive season, and they want to have an alcoholic beverage, they don't have to worry about drinking and driving, so we're trying to bring everything together. So, Mr. Jen, can you please explain the expanded system for New Year's Eve?
Yes, this year, New Year's Eve, we're going to be operating the service from 10:00 AM to 3:30, yeah, 3:30 AM, and what it's going to be is, is we're going to ask people that if they want to ride the Wego system, it changed service for this day, because with the activities taking place in the park, we can't get through there either. So we're going to be housing our buses at Clifton Hill, near River Road, and there's an island in there around the center half, which we will have exclusive right to use, and the police are going to be assisting us for getting people in and out of the park. So this map that you see on the screen right now is going to be posted at all Wego stops, including those that we're not servicing during this period, just advising them where they can catch the bus, and it's going to operate for this day, as I said, from 10:30 AM to 3:30 AM the next day, New Year's Day, and then we'll go back to the regular service. But you can check on the Wego website, wegoniagarafalls.com, to find out information that's posted there, to tell you what you need to do to catch the buses on that day.
That's excellent, I'm sure that's just going to help make the experience that much more pleasant, and get cars off the road, because we don't need any more gridlock, that's for sure. Any questions of Mr. Jen on the transit piece here? Okay, and last, we just want to wish everyone at home, all the residents of Niagara Falls, a great Merry Christmas and a happy holiday season for whatever it is that you celebrate. Wish everyone a very safe, happy and healthy Christmas, and a prosperous new year. So that ends the mayor's remarks.
Excuse me, I'm running.
That's that? Well, I could do some more, yes, Counselor Carrio?
Counselor Mays was at the Community Kitchen as well.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I sold them a ticket.
Okay. So thank you to Counselor Mays for supporting the Community Kitchen as well, the Skyline event.
The other thing I was going to say is, can you now tell who the talent is, can you, for New Year's Eve?
Yeah, oh, yeah, it's...
I know, but it'd be nice to...
Yeah, that's great, we've got Demi Lovato, who's huge, absolutely huge, and the interest and the millions of Twitter followers that she has is incredible, and she's a Disney person, very, very well-known for acting and for performing, so she's one of those crossover performers that, yeah, she's going to be unbelievable, and the buzz, matter of fact, I did, X Factor, yes, and as a matter of fact, I just did the Entertainment Tonight Canada show, and on Friday of last week, and they are just buzzed about who we have. So we've got Sam Roberts and Serena Ryder, there are three big acts, all three of them are huge, two of them are Canadian, one is obviously international, just huge, and then we've got a lot of other warm-up acts, and they're still securing some of them, but these are the big ones that they're buzzing across social media like crazy, and as a matter of fact, I'm sure we're going to have a top show again in Canada. Counselor Iannone?
I think we're going to have the biggest turnout too, because families are going to come out to see Demi Lovato. You might have talked that spans were great before, but she's the biggest thing we've had, but I will tell you, I was cleaning last night, and I hear Global TV come on, and I hear, "Hello, this is Demi Lovato," my head spun, she said, "I will see you New Year's Eve in Niagara Falls." It is remarkable, like that's across everywhere now. So just congratulations to the event coordinators, and whoever managed to gather here, great, I'm really happy.
Well, I think it was a great decision when we partnered up with Global and ET Canada, because they put in millions of dollars, they're experts at this, they know exactly how to bring in the crowds, and since we have, we've been beating everyone, including Toronto, and also Serge works so hard on behalf of the city, works very closely with the Parks Commission, and with the BIAs, and they come together along with Global, our partners, and ET Canada, put on an outstanding show, and it's amazing, where you wonder how big is it going to get. The only factor we have no control over is the weather, but as far as anything else, the fireworks show is outstanding, there's still rooms available, we tell people, "Don't come for the night, come for the weekend, and don't just wait till the last minute, because you will be disappointed, it will be incredible in Niagara Falls." And we've got the people mover, we go to help back up all the amount of people that we have coming to town. So, yeah, great talent, definitely plan to be down there. Okay, moving along, we've got communications and comments of the city. Clerk, so first item, Kathleen McCarthy is requesting the city consider instituting a trap neuter return program. Okay, moved by Counselor Wing, that we refer to staff, seconded by Counselor Thompson, is there any discussion to that? Seeing none, all those in favor? Man, that's approved. Next is the Canadian Union of Postal Workers requesting support of the Canadian Postal Service Charter Review, be open to the public and focus on revenue generation and no cuts. Moved by Counselor Iannone, seconded by Counselor Morocco, any discussion to... Of course, Counselor Gates?
[inaudible].
Okay, good. Yeah, Counselor Mays?
I'm opposed to that, I think we just received the file.
Okay. Any other discussion to the motion that's on the floor? Okay, seeing none, then we'll call the vote, all those in favor? Okay, and opposed? Okay, with two opposed. Item three, Carrie Boyle protesting the parking restrictions approved by council on the west side of Dorchester Road between Douglas and across from Caledonia. Counselor Thompson?
Yes, this was approved at the last council meeting, I believe Counselor Morocco moved the motion, I seconded. There's some inference here that Counselor Gates might have had some influence. I did my own research on this, did not talk to him, and he doesn't have a conflict, in my opinion, with a father-in-law situation. However, this was done for safety reasons. I have personally known Mr. DeLuca for probably forty years, he's probably been in that place for about forty years, maybe more, but had a problem getting in and out of this driveway, deserved to have the freedom to do that without somebody parking there all the time. So I think Counselor Morocco and I made the motion, knowing it was for safety purposes. We always have our staff investigate these things, why Marzana Carrick was out there, and I feel the red... out there, and, uh, I, uh, feel the, uh, resolution was appropriate, and I would move it be received and filed.
Okay, moved by Council Thompson, seconded by Council Morocco. Yes, Council Morocco?
I'll just, I could speak to that as well, too. I actually was offended to think that, uh, I'm actually being influenced by another council, and I'm sorry that, uh, you know, if he, if there's a relationship there, that's fine, but I have to say that I know the DeLuca's are a lot longer than I knew the council that sits at this table. So I have to say that, uh, I base my judgment on the information that came and for safety concerns, so, uh, and it's Mrs. Morocco, by the way, too, just wanted to clarify that.
Noted. Any other, uh, any other comments at council? Okay, seeing none, so we have a motion, receive and file, all those in favor? Okay, and opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Uh, Mr. Clerk, are there any additional items for council's consideration?
No, no.
Okay, ratification of in-camera matters, Mr. Clerk?
Yeah, your worship, uh, one item, which actually will also be, uh, I'll also speak to, uh, as far as bylaws, and, uh, it's a bylaw to authorize the execution of a lease with Steel Rail Entertainment Incorporated, respecting leasing of a specific area of the lands known as the former rail lands, and also authorizing, um, yourself and myself, obviously, to execute the, uh, the lease, uh, document.
Okay, uh, so we need a, uh, motion to rat- for ratification? Moved by Council Morocco, seconded by Council Mays. All those in favor? Okay, opposed? So that's unanimous? Okay, uh, Mr. Clerk?
Well, we're about a half an hour ahead of schedule. The first of the, uh, deputations is slated for six thirty. I don't know if anybody has any new business or if you wanna take a break for a half an hour.
No, no, let's do new business, we'll get that. Do you have any new business, uh, Council Morocco, Council Thompson, anyone else? Do you have any, Council Gates? He likes to be last, I don't know, he's gonna wait. Okay, I'm sorry, Council Morocco, you've got the floor.
Um, yes, your worship, there's a few things I'd like to bring forward. Um, a couple of residents have been talking about the dog park, uh, apparently there's some controversy about keeping it open all year, uh, round. So we've been approached by a number of residents. I know you have been through your, uh, through the office, and you're asking about seasonal closure of the dog park. Uh, we would like to ask staff to investigate, uh, keeping it open year-round, uh, to meet the requirements of the residents. We understand that there is some concerns around maintenance, uh, winter upkeep, and it is not currently equipped for winter snow maintenance, with the challenges of the location, but we would like to investigate, uh, and be able to make an informed decision on the next step. Um, I guess what we have there is that, um, some of the dog owners that take their dogs don't actually clean up after their dogs then, and then come spring, you know, what our staff has dealt with, uh, is dealing with a horrible, uh, mess there. So I think we have to try and figure out some way that we can try and, uh, work with this, and maybe we can get the other people as well. So I'd like to make a, uh, a motion, and that's to ask staff a report, uh, showing the viability of keeping the dog park open, um, all year-round, or next year, you know, is it open next year, all year-round? So I can make that motion.
Okay, we got a motion by Council Morocco, seconded by Council Mays. Uh, is there any other discussion to this motion? And if I could just add to it, yes, I have been, uh, stopped by a number of people, and I didn't know that it was closed in the winter, um, and so this is good, and I know we've mentioned to staff, the staff has some ideas on how to, uh, do, but, but again, we can get a report to come back. And the other thought I had, too, is Humane Society is always looking for more revenues, and since you're supposed to have a dog tag and have your dog licensed when you go there, maybe we can somehow work together with the Humane Society, they can help us police it, maybe educate the people on picking up their, their mess, and at the same time, this will, you know, encourage them to get their dog licenses and help revenues of the Humane Society. So maybe this could be a little bit of a symbiotic way to get everyone involved in it.
So staff would include all those ideas, that would be greatly appreciated.
Okay, that's great. Uh, if there's no other discussion, we'll call the vote, all those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous? Okay, thanks for that.
Sorry, I have another one, uh, regarding the charity bingo report. Um, each year, our clerk's, uh, department provides a license to a number of charitable organizations to operate bingos and collect proceeds, uh, for their charity. I understand that there is a process to, uh, select these organizations as they request bingos, and that we keep an ongoing list of who is utilizing this opportunity. Uh, we are being approached by, um, local, uh, fall charities with concerns that they believe that they are, uh, being overlooked by a qua- uh, quality of bingo applications from outside Niagara Falls. So I'd like to make a motion that we would, uh, like to ask staff to report back on charity bingo, uh, dispersal, uh, so that we may have a full understanding of how those bingos are being allocated, uh, in Niagara Falls.
Okay, uh, motion by Council Morocco, seconded by Councilor Mays. Any discussion to the motion? Call the vote, all those in favor? Okay?
And then, um, sorry, I have another one. No standing, uh, traffic ticket price from fifty to forty dollars. Um, after a number of complaints from the past, uh, few weeks of residents who've received no standing tickets near, uh, post office, mail drop off inlet, we did receive, um, research. Our parking department has been able to provide information that shows no standing fines in surrounding municipalities range from fifty to forty dollars, with the average being forty. As other tickets in the downtown area for parking violations are significantly less expensive, we would like to, uh, view the, uh, opinion of decreasing the no standing fee, uh, to fifty, uh, to forty, uh, from fifty, two forty from fifty, yes. Uh, a no parking infraction would only, um, warrant a twenty-dollar fine, as I understand, so perhaps investigating that option would be beneficial to explore, uh, as well. So, I'd like to make a motion to request that staff investigate decreasing the fine amount for no standing infraction in this, in Niagara Falls, and also to change the no standing in front of the post office to no parking.
Okay, so we have a motion by Council Morocco, uh, Morocco, seconded by Council Thompson. Council Thompson?
Um, yeah. Were you gonna quit there, or just got one, another one?
Well, I just have one more.
Yeah, that's fine. Oh, yeah. Okay, yeah, we'll get your next one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anyway, um, this is, uh, become, uh, a common complaint, uh, the post office area there, uh, it's, uh, a no standing area, you can pull in and drop off mail. Uh, sometimes the people run in to try to get stamps, uh, you can never park there, it's so busy, uh, it's an inadequate parking area. Uh, I don't know whether it can be expanded, uh, or some leniency given, uh, better signing, uh, telling the people what they can do and what they can't do. Um, I, actually, a couple of, uh, complaints, uh, in the last week, just with people getting a fifty-dollar ticket. Uh, they got the handicap sticker on, they tried to get into the post office, they got the stamp on, uh, where they bought the, uh, uh, the stamp, and also the time when they got the ticket, and it's like, like a minute difference, uh, so there doesn't seem to be any leniency there to, uh, give the opportunity, and this was, uh, somebody with a handicap sticker, uh, and a disabled person, uh, in the car. So I think, uh, are you asking for a report back, uh, on this? So, uh, I, I think it's, uh, well worthwhile to have a look at it, and to look at the area and see if we can make some recommendations and some opportunity for people to, uh, stop there, because it's a very busy, active area.
Any other, uh, Council Iannone, did you have your hand up, too, or no? Any other discussion to the motion? We'll call the vote, all those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous? Did you say you had another one, Councilor?
Uh, yes, and actually, just for, um, some of the residents, last, uh, council meeting, we actually, uh, had, uh, petitions come forward and from Burnwood residents requesting at the parklet, uh, and, uh, trail within their subdivision be funded and developed, well, a few phone calls came back and said, well, you know, you referred it to, uh, the budget for twenty fourteen, what does that mean? So if we could maybe just have staff, uh, 'cause I'm sure they're watching, I mean, there was a, probably a hundred-plus signatures on a petition, um, the understanding was that they thought it was all part of the developer's, uh, plan to build the parkette and the, uh, the walkway, and now they said they're kinda confused, because it looks like it's coming back to council coffers to actually fund that, uh, parkette and walkway. So could we have an explanation for the, uh, residents there in Burnwood that are actually watching to see what the comments will be from my question?
Can you get, uh, staff some of the comment? Uh, Mr. Holman?
Sure, uh, Mr. Mayor, um, our parks are, uh, the land is provided to us by the developer, and the development of the parks are provided through the collection of development charges. So as the development proceeds and, and, uh, homes are built there, we'll collect development charges that will go towards the funding of the park improvement. It's one of the problems that we have, uh, in our, our current system, in that the first couple of homes in don't get access to a park until we've generated enough revenue to fund that improvement. Um, so I think we're at that state now where we can actually go ahead and develop that site for a park, um, but the project has to be identified in the capital budget, and it hasn't been to this point. So, um, I appreciate the fact that, uh, um, you know, the residents there are frustrated, we're not going to be using tax dollars to fund the park development, um, but the project has to be included in, uh, approved capital budget.
Thank you very much, Mr. Holman. I just wanted to make sure that they had a clear understanding of it. I could explain that, but I wanted to make sure that that's exactly how it was, uh, planned out, so thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Council Gates?
Just, just on that, uh, uh, M W. two thirteen sixty-one, I put down in some of my notes about, uh, maybe we can go to the developer and, uh, have them take care of the trails and whatever else they need there, and they're delaying the, uh, third phase there, might be, uh, a way to get a chance to talk to the developer and see if he can, uh, can help out with getting that done a little quicker than waiting for it to be all done, uh, if it's gonna be paid for anyway. So, uh, so I can see where the residents are concerned, but, uh, I think if we go to the developer, uh, they wanted to delay the phase three for another three years, uh, don't wanna get into a situation where we're gonna have to wait another three years to get it done, so might be a way to have some conversation with the developer.
Okay, any, uh, yes, do you wanna comment, Mr. Cherishman?
Well, developers, uh, pay, uh, their development charges as required. The funding of the projects come out of the development party. I don't wanna misconstrue that the, the development charges that the developer pays for that particular park are just solely towards that particular, uh, playground equipment that's there. It's, it's in a pool of money, and as Mr. Holman indicates, when that park is ready now to, to begin, we have to put it in the capital budget, so, um, going towards the developer, he's already paid, uh, for one and two, he would have paid something for three if once it's approved, and we would go forward with that. So I think that, uh, reports the last council meeting was just an indication that it's gonna be going into next year's capital budget. We would have to do a, a tender to, to do the work or, and to hire a contractor to put that in, and that process would be done as part of that, once the capital budget approved. The funding, uh, the funding of the project would come from D C.'s, and then there's always a component that, a small component that is from, uh, other parts.
Okay, okay, great. Uh, new business, did you, uh, Council Thompson?
Yeah.
Hey, Council Morocco's finished now.
Anyway, just to follow up on Councilor Morocco's, uh, comments with respect to the, uh, the tickets that are issued for parking, uh, also, uh, received a couple of complaints, uh, this week, because people who had brought in, uh, gifts, toys, uh, that, uh, compensation for the tickets, uh, were rejected, um...
Are you talking about the Toys for Tickets, uh, program?
Yes, yes.
Yeah?
Yeah, um, I thought, uh, one in particular was unusual. I know that there's specific guidelines, uh, you must have a receipt, you, uh, it has to be, uh, unwrapped, uh, there's all kinds of, uh, criteria involved, but, uh, the one in specific that was brought to my attention, uh, seemed very strange that it was, um, rejected. It was actually, uh, an Xbox, and it was worth a hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, they bought it through the Salvation Army, uh, at a reduced rate, but, uh, it was rejected, and then the same person ran into somebody without, uh, with a large bear, that, uh, they didn't have the receipt with them at the time, was also rejected. Uh, is that program going smooth, or how is that going? Are you receiving any concerns about that?
Uh, actually, I did get, receive a call with someone, too, that had, uh, a toy rejected, and, uh, I said I'd look into it, so actually, well, maybe, uh, I don't know, Mr. Jen, could give us any update, or is that Mr. Brown? Toys for Tickets program?
Yeah, Toys for Tickets program, uh, you know, it's, it's exactly what you're saying, that it has to be receipts with it, and it's usually the charity that asks us to do these things before we can give them the toys to the, to the charity. The value has to be of equal or greater value. Uh, we have people that come in and just donate, donate, uh, toys to the charity as well, without a ticket, uh, but it's, it's the guideline that the charities give to us to say, you must do this, otherwise we won't take it.
Yeah, anyway, uh, you got the same, uh, complaint?
Yeah.
Phone call, so if you're looking into it, uh, just let me know, because, uh, I think that, uh, I didn't understand it, so if this is happening, uh, if this is commonplace, uh, and something we can do...
Do you wanna ask for a report to the program, Councilor?
And we can get some specifics on, uh...
Yeah, sure. Uh, um, motion that we, uh, have a report back on.
Okay, moved by Council Thompson, seconded by Council Morocco, and yet the same comment I received from the one gentleman, he said, I bought a gift that was worth quite a bit more than the ticket, and he said it was rejected, 'cause I didn't have its original packaging. He said, I had the receipt, and he said, can you explain me why? And I said, no, I, I can't explain to you why, but we can find out, so this is our first opportunity. I received this call earlier today, so we can find out through a report and find out, is it the charity? Is it us? I understand the value, it's gotta be worth the ticket, I get that, but I don't understand the packaging, it's, I don't know. We need to find out a little more information, I think.
Okay, that's fine.
It's a good thing, we don't want a good program to not be perceived as good.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, so we'll make the motion, all those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, thank you for that.
Um, everybody's aware that, uh, the city is taking back the, uh, water billing, uh, from, uh, Niagara Peninsula Energy or Niagara Falls Hydro, as it used to be. Um, the, uh, savings at the time when we sent it over, uh, to, uh, the hydro was, uh, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, at that particular time, and I asked the question a few weeks ago, uh, what is, uh, the savings going to be when it comes back? Uh, I think the figure was thrown out at ten thousand dollars, uh, at the time. Um, I've been sitting, listening to, uh, the, uh, at the meetings at the, uh, Niagara Peninsula Energy, and, uh, talking about, uh, the staff and the personnel and the people, uh, that, uh, are going to be, uh, involved in, when it comes to City Hall, uh, uh, two hundred and some odd thousand dollars at the Gale Center, which I, I understand is gonna, and I support it, because it's gonna provide better service to the people in, in that end of the city, which is going to ta- uh, also, uh, have the water, uh, situation. But, uh, when I think about this, uh, I, I would like to have a report back indicating exactly, uh, the changes that are taking place here, the direct cost to the municipality or savings to the municipality, because, uh, I get a totally different, uh, picture when I listen to what is going on as your representatives, Councilor, uh, Iannone and I at the, uh, Niagara Peninsula Energy, uh, that this is, uh, a huge, uh, effort, and the transferal is, uh, gonna cost a substantial amount of money. So, uh, I would make a motion that we have a full explanation back to us here, so that we know exactly what we're approving before this transition takes place.
Okay, so we've got a motion, uh, for, uh, you're asking for the ramifications, financial ramifications of the movement? Yes, Council Iannone?
And to that note, I'd like to know what N P., what service N P. B. I. provides now with the information to the customer compared to what information we're going to be able to supply to the customer when the city takes over, and the billing period, because I think that's very important for residents to know.
Okay, uh, Council Mays?
No, I have another question on the same, uh, on, uh, the, the change of the billing as well, uh, but my question, maybe we should deal with this first?
Okay, sure.
My question has to do with the automatic debit, so they have with the hydro now.
Okay, uh, did staff, uh, wanna comment at all on this, or, uh, okay, all right. So we've got a motion, ask for a report back on the financial ramifications of the change over, of having hydro collect your water bills and now the city at the, uh, through the, uh, McBean Center. Okay, so we'll call, yes?
No, I'm thinking maybe I should ask that question now, because maybe it could be involved in this.
By the way.
No, the thing is, for instance, I have my hydro on automatic debit, and will let me grandfathered in, perhaps, uh, or do, do people have to fill out the forms all over again to do the, pay the bill through the city?
The, uh, the, uh, these processes have all been, uh, we've been working on this for some period of time, uh, staff of, uh, the Finance Department, Municipal Works Department have been working with, uh, staff, N I. S. have been working with, uh, N P. I. staff. have been working with, uh, staff NIS, have been working with, uh, NTI staff. The, um, the question of automatic, uh, payments, um, because of the banking laws, uh, that we, a new account has to be set up. So, we will be, um, once, uh, in the new year, we will be contacting those individuals that have automatic, uh, payments coming out of their accounts and, and re, re-establishing that particular account, uh, or having them re-establish it with the city. Um, it's interesting too because, uh, while taxpayers and water ratepayers are the same, they're the same individuals in ninety percent of the homes, uh, the, the, the accounts for automatic payments have to be set up, established separately due to the banking law. So, that will be a process that will be coming forward. We've, uh, we started that process with the staff at NTI by making that as part of our, our, uh, transition process, and we'll be, uh, going forward with that in the, in the new year.
Okay. Any other questions on this topic? Okay, seeing none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous. Any other new business? Oh, you've got more?
Yeah, like two more. Uh, we still got, uh...
So, we do?
Ten minutes to go, so I'm trying to take up the time for you so you don't have to tell any jokes or...
Thank you for that.
Anyway, um...
What's that?
Yeah, okay.
He, he wants to do a, a new, new business too, so.
Oh, he wants to.
Should save him a couple minutes.
Anyway, uh, this one has, uh, only been going on since, uh, November eighth, uh, November third, two thousand and eight. It has to do with the, uh, street end, the Riley Street End in Chippewa, um, uh, in oh eight. Uh, the council unanimously voted to, uh, lease, uh, the, uh, street end. What, what was that?
It wasn't unanimous.
You didn't have to go there. Did you research that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've had to send that report out time and again. I think, uh, obviously the majority of council passed it, but there were a couple...
Yeah, okay. Anyway, uh, it, it wasn't, uh, a con, it wasn't controversial except to, uh, one of the neighbors who used to have a house on there, and, uh, the, uh, city had to go in on several occasions and clean up the property, uh, because of its condition. Anyway, we sold it to a Mr. Bevan in Chippewa, uh, sorry, didn't, we leased it to, uh, Mr. Bevan in Chippewa. Uh, he is getting ready to build now after all this time. He has, uh, probably the balance, uh, thirty years, the balance of a forty-year lease left. And, uh, he, uh, found out that part of the, uh, half of the lot, uh, is the, uh, was it, was it his?
Well, I, I, I know the...
No, there's, there's a hydro...
I know Fortis, uh, is trying to put an easement in. I haven't gotten into that yet. Yeah. But, uh, the area that he, the condition of the lot is exactly as it was disclosed in the report, and the building area that he has to build his building in is exactly as represented to him in the report that was provided at the day. The, the, the building, he actually has a bigger building envelope now than he did when he rented it, so he could actually build a bigger house than he thought he did when he rented it.
Well, that's, that's not the information that, that I have here. It's, uh, indicating that, uh, that it's Fortis. Fortis is, uh, uh, the hydro line, which is, uh, a private, uh, company in, on the Ford Erie, which has some lines here. Don't supply any, uh, specifically to Niagara Falls. And because they have a couple of poles there, they're trying to suggest that they are going to have a lease, and they're going to infringe on his building envelope on one, on the other half of the lot, which is gonna prevent him, uh, from building. So, first of all, I wanna make sure that, uh, he has that right because we leased it to him. Uh, there's gonna be a building go there. They're going to, uh, not only get the lease annually, but also taxes when it's there. And, uh, I'm against Fortis infringing on them. They can move the poles over, uh, a couple of feet, uh, two poles, and they can, uh, be on O, uh, OPG land without any problem. Uh, I suggest, uh, they can infringe on his property. He just wants to have the building envelope to build, uh, the property there, to build his house. So...
That stock that you have in front of you, I, I superficially heard that, and it demonstrates that his building envelope is exactly what he was told he was going to get when he built the building. He has designed a building that doesn't fit in the building envelope that he rented. But that's not, that's not, uh...
But he's, but he's since, since then scaled the building back.
And he could fit within the building.
And, and he will, but with, uh, Fortis' easement, that would infringe on him.
No, it wouldn't. Not, not if he builds a building within the envelope that he, that he purchased. That building, that's illustrated on the, on the plan you have before you. It's larger than the building envelope that he rent, that he rented. And that's why it goes across...
We're getting, we're getting mixed information then because the, uh, Mr. Bevan and his, uh, uh, his assistants who is helping him with this indicates that, uh, they cannot get a building permit under these circumstances. And if Fortis comes in and requests this, it will, uh, reduce the opportunity for them to, uh, build the lot. So, I guess the only way to handle this at this point, because I thought there was a, a report coming in after the new year, uh, they just wanted to see if we could expedite this situation. So, uh, I would, uh, I would just make a motion that we, uh, refer to staff, to Mr. Beaman, uh, to meet with them, to clarify. And, uh, uh, my objective is to make sure that Fortis does not prevent them, uh, through an easement from going ahead and building on the, the one half of the property.
Just to address the sort of easement?
Yeah.
They have a right to it. We cannot prevent them from having a right to have their poles over that property.
Yeah. What if they move their poles? What if we insist that they move their poles?
We would have to compensate them to move the poles.
Yeah. Uh, so they, they, so they can prevent him from building there?
They can't prevent him from building. He can build within the envelope that he got, that was illustrated on the document when he leased the property. He can build within that envelope. In fact, he can build in the area in front of your, uh, Counselor Thompson, that pink area?
Yeah.
He could actually build in there, and that's actually not shown as it being an area he could build on in the documents that were in front of council when he entered the lease.
Okay. Um, I'd move that, uh, be referred to staff to meet with, uh, uh, Mr. Bevan and his, uh, um, representative, Mr. Mason, uh, to see if they can resolve this problem, uh, so that they finally get the opportunity to go ahead and build on this property.
Okay.
Which they're ready to do.
Okay. Moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Morocco, that we, uh, staff will meet and help them figure out the status.
We would be happy to meet with Mr. Mason again.
Okay, good. Okay. I noticed Fortis, uh, right away out to those other sides through Dock Street and, you know, there, there's a whole bunch of it.
Yeah.
Any other discussion to the motion? Okay, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous?
And, uh, sorry for all of the, uh, issues here, but, um, the, the last one has to do with, uh, a, uh, a parking permit, uh, on Chrysler Avenue. Uh, a lady, uh, Fay Moore, who is severely, uh, disabled, uh, she lives in the apartment at forty-six, uh, Ninety-Two Chrysler, apartment one oh five, at the back of the parking lot. Uh, um, if she parks in the back, she has to climb up seventeen steps to get up to her apartment, to get in the building. And if she parks in the front on the street, uh, she has two steps to go up with. And, uh, it's, uh, impossible for her to do that, and she would like to get a, uh, parking permit to park on street. Uh, there was, uh, some concern about parking on streets with the winter and the snowplow. Uh, she has indicated that, uh, uh, she would be responsible for that, uh, either her son moving the car in at night into the back and pulling it out in the morning, but having a place to park because there's no parking at this particular time, and, uh, or, uh, digging it out if the, uh, the plows sewn in. So, I would like to refer, uh, this issue, which I think the staff are already working on coming up. Yeah. So, they're, we're just, just trying to expedite it because the next time, uh, is the fourteenth of January, and, uh, this is causing, uh, a considerable amount of, uh, uh, concern with her and, uh, her living, uh, situation. So, I would move that, uh, we, uh, refer staff to see if they can expedite the parking permit for it.
Okay, understood. Uh, moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by, uh, Counselor Morocco. And, uh, Mr. Dren can comment?
Um, just, uh, a comment. Um, we've, uh, we've known about this for probably about three or four weeks, and we've been trying to contact her, and we've had difficulty. We have, uh, had other people contact us. We have investigated. We're prepared to, to offer her something, but the difficulty is getting a hold of her. We can't. It just seems that we just can't get a hold of her. And we're prepared to give her, uh, proceed with a permit and allow her to park there, recognizing her situation. So, it's just a matter of, you know, how do we get a hold of her?
Maybe Counselor Thompson can help us connect with her.
Treasure wall.
Yeah, treasure wall.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion. Uh, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous?
Yeah.
Okay, yes, you have more, Counselor?
No, I, I just want to, uh, uh, take a minute, one minute to, uh, thank all of the, uh, uh, great staff that we have here at the city who, uh, some of us harass on a, a daily basis with, uh, complaints and issues like this. And, uh, they all react phenomenally. Uh, we're very fortunate. Uh, some of them, uh, I bother probably three or four times a day, but Dean usually tries to hit back to me. Uh, uh, Teresa and, uh, uh, I shouldn't mention names, but, uh, these guys are all so great here in trying to accommodate with all of the problems that we deal with on a daily basis. So, I just wanna say, from a personal point of view, it is appreciated, and thank you very much, and, uh, I really enjoy working with them all. Thank you.
Well, that's great. Well, that was very, yeah. I'd have to echo your comments. We got great, great staff, and, uh, under the leadership of our CIO, uh, we're all rowing the boat in the same direction. And along with this council guide to council, we've got, we got a lot of great things happening, a lot of great things going to happen. So, I echo those comments. And Counselor Carey, you had a comment about his comment? Uh, did you think, uh...
Well, I was just wondering whether not to light up him buying them all a drink at the Christmas party.
Oh, so you mean don't tell me, show me kind of thing? Yeah.
I thought he was gonna get up and say he was gonna pick up the taxes.
Counselor, uh, Gates?
I'd like to thank, uh, Counselor Thompson for giving me thirty seconds, uh, trying to, uh, get my issue out. Um, I just wanted to follow up, uh, from our council meeting. Uh, I've been talking about real safety, like, uh, on, um, Gardner Road, uh, there's a real problem there with the tracks, and I was just wondering if Mr. Holman's had a chance to contact, uh, CNN, uh, to see if either they'll fix it or we'll fix it and charge it back. I'm getting a lot of car calls, particularly from the, uh, permanent area on, uh, uh, they're having, they're concerned their cars are gonna break down.
Counselor Gates, we did follow up right after the meeting, and we had conversations. They were to get back to us, uh, but I don't really know what the status is. Um, we'll go and have a look at it again to make sure it is, it is safe. Um, and sometimes if, sometimes it's not a receipt in that area, maybe there's something else that we can do as kind of an interim solution to help, uh, you know, address the situation.
Just so you know, I drive down there every day after I drop my daughter off at the same height, uh, to go to work, and, uh, it needs to be fixed. Uh, I can't say it any clearer than that. All right, thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, just, just on that, uh, uh, you don't have to be speeding when you hit that thing. It just jars your whole car, and it's been like that for a year, or maybe longer. It's a serious problem, and somebody's gonna, uh, be coming in and, uh, have serious damage to their car and expect the city to pay for it.
Counselor Morocco?
Uh, your worship, I know that we were talking in the back and, uh, uh, earlier on about, uh, the world's lost a, a great individual, Nelson Mandela. So, I just want to acknowledge that this council has recognized, uh, a, his loss, and, uh, I think that somebody goes out to his family and all that he touched.
Yeah, absolutely. I'd echo that. I know this past summer, Counselor Peter Angelo, he was acting mayor, uh, went down and, uh, offered birthday greetings. And, uh, we emailed them to Nelson Mandela for his ninety-fifth birthday, and I asked different iconic cities around the world to do that. So, he did that. He actually sang it too, which was, uh, really nice. So, I'm not gonna embarrass him by having it played tonight, but, yeah. But, uh, but, yeah, you're right. Uh, we acknowledge the, the loss of a great leader, and, uh, and you're right, and we're glad that we're at least a part of his ninety-fifth birthday that he got to, uh, he got to hear. Thank you. Well, uh, perfect timing. The clerk, as usual, nailed it right on. Uh, next step is, uh, presentations and deputations. So, the first item up is regarding the Fairway sewer backup. And I understand that we have, uh, someone here to speak to this? Yes, if you'd like to come forward to the microphone?
Worship the mayor and ladies and gentlemen of council. Uh, you were commended for your willingness to serve by serving on the council, and you were congratulated on your success, and you were wished every success into the year twenty fourteen and into the future. But we in, uh, Fairway Road have some concerns we would like to share with you. At first, a little bit of history. On the evening of the twenty-ninth of October of twenty twelve, I arrived home from a meeting at about ten thirty at night, dressed in a tuxedo, and I found my sweetheart and, uh, Don Maynes, my neighbor, excitedly discussing things. And they said, "Go, go, go down, look in the basement." Halfway down the stairs, I see this sheen of fluid, raw untreated sewage, geysering up out of the floor drain, as well as from the shower and out of the toilet. I was a fast-change artist out of the tuxedo, I can tell you. In some work clothes, in rubber boots, lugging stuff up out of the basement, contaminating the carpets in the family room and so on. Now, later on, I found out, were we alone in this disaster? We were not. There are thirty homes on Fairway Road. Nine out of the thirty had sewer backups, raw untreated sewer in their basement. Let's fast forward. July the nineteenth, in the evening. My wife says, "What's that funny noise in the basement?" Down I go, halfway, a sheen of fluid again, raw untreated sewage coming up out of the floor drain and out of the shower. Now, the Good Book tells us to love our neighbors. But I don't want my neighbor's poo and dotty secretions and God knows what coming up my floor drains and contaminating my basement, my family room, my bedroom, the pantry, the cold room down there. So, these are some of the issues we would like to just have for your consideration. Number one, there is a considerable safety issue here. Sewer backup with untreated, raw sewage, contamination of the basement and all of the contents of the basement, loss of valuable possessions, family treasures, photographs, some irreplaceable. The risk of waterborne disease is well-known, and untreated water, sewage water, and the infections that are possible are a concern. Number two, property value decrease. When you want to sell a home, you must disclose problems. And raw sewage backup is a very significant problem. What happens to the resale value of homes that have that kind of reputation? In this case, nine of us on Fairway Road, two sewer backups in eight months. A most damaging negative image for our city as well. Number three, insurance problem. Now, most of us are somewhat familiar with insurance companies, and they aren't always the easiest to deal with. In my case, the October flood, fourteen thousand dollars and change of damages, paid for. Thank God I had sewer backup insurance. Not all of us that were on Fairway Road had that insurance. Premiums increases. I spoke to one couple. They had a forty percent premium increase from last year to the beginning of this year. Forty percent. The deductible cost. Mrs. Ainsley had to pay five thousand dollars as a deductible before the insurance company would do any claim. That was in November of last year. In August... In August, another five thousand dollars deductible, and I also have heard that at least one person there, the insurance company is refusing to renew their insurance situation. Now, what does that mean? Family disruption, stress, hectic, the time taken to replace things and so on and so forth. So, first of all, the communications somehow fell down. After the flood of the sewer backup of October of twenty twelve, no one said a word to me about the RAP program, although I had been in contact with the city a number of times, not a single word about the RAP program. I'm sure you all are familiar with this. Had anybody from City Hall told me, "Hey, Bern, there is a program which you can have a backflow valve installed," I would have jumped all over that. Not a word was said, nor was it said to anybody else. We have another flood eight months later, sewer backup again. Number of times in contact with the city, no word about the RAP program. Communications? How did I find out about the RAP program? Stu Ainsley said to me, "Well, you know, Bern, there's a program there." "No, I don't know." "Yes, there is a program, but who knew about it?" Now, they will tell you, "Oh, yes, we put it in the website," and so on and so forth. That's not the kind of thing which draws your attention until you have a problem, raw sewage in your basement. Now, in conclusion, we're not engineers on Fairway Road. Some of my friends are here with me. We're no, we're no engineers. We don't know about the engineering difficulties, the replacement that might be necessary, the upkeep and maintenance. However, Your Worship was very proud and honored to point out to the city that we're getting millions of dollars in tax revenue from the casinos, and we have a suggestion for you, Your Worship and council. Take that money and solve part of our problems with our sewers, and I'm sure Fairway Road isn't the only place. I mean, after all, we don't want to have a new name, the Sewer Backup of Canada. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Nearing, is there any questions of council for Mr. Nearing? Anyone have any questions? Uh, Counselor Peter Angelo?
Uh, Your Worship, I, I really don't have any questions as a speaker, um, and I want to thank him for coming down, and I want to also say that it is unfortunate that you weren't told about the RAP program. The very first time that you had a sewer backup, you should have been told. Obviously, uh, Fairway Road, which is, I guess, in the north end, just off the perimeter, is one of the areas that sewers aren't separated yet. Council did, um, pass a report, uh, about a month and a half ago, that pre-approved a list of projects that we're gonna be looking at doing, and I can say that twenty of those twenty-five projects were all sewer separation projects, so, I mean, I think council does recognize the fact that, you know, there is a pressing need to get the sewer separated, and that's something that we're gonna be looking at doing in the coming years.
Yeah, and, uh, Counselor Peter Angelo, Budget Chair, uh, is obviously very, uh, agreeable to the idea that that is a key, it's gotta be proactive approach to the sewers and separating, so you don't get sewage, and you're, you're, you're absolutely right, well spoken. Uh, Counselor Carey, and then Morocco?
Thank you, Your Worship, that was a, a tremendous description on the sad situation at your home, and I'm sure that even though it's very high on all of our priorities, it makes it even higher to have you describe it the way you did. It's, I think it's the worst thing that can happen, it's worse than bad, really, it's worse than anything, that sewer in someone's home. I just would like to know from staff, how could it happen where we have an area and they flood, and then the people not be told? I just, and how would we fix that? So that if someone has a flood, even if it's just a little bit of a flood, which could be a hint that in the future it's gonna be a bigger flood if you get more water, how could this slip through the cracks? And have we done anything, obviously this is not new, um, so staff knows that this happened and that he wasn't informed, what have we done so that the next time someone gets a sniff of a problem, we make sure they know about the program and make sure they have the opportunity to put in a, a sewer, uh, backup preventer?
Your Worship, I could make one additional comment.
Yes, first.
I have already mentioned that after the first flood, my insurance company coughed up fourteen thousand dollars and change. After the second flood, another twelve thousand dollars and change. And I must say that at this moment, neither of those claims are yet fulfilled. So not only is there tremendous hectic and stress in the situation, but it is ongoing. It is lasting a long time. They're, I suppose, moving as fast as they can, but I think that at some point, they want to have some guarantee of action from the city, because insurance companies are not philanthropic organizations, they are there to make money. And when they lose, in my case, in an eight-month period, twenty-six thousand dollars, that gets their attention, I think.
To that point, Counselor Ione?
That point is, Fairway Road on one of those twenty out of twenty-five projects that we have...
I, we'd have to ask Mr. Holman, no?
It's not?
Maybe this'll help, um, Fairway Road, as I understand it, is, is not on a combined sewer system. The problem that's, that's occurring in that particular area is a result of a weeping tile being connected to the sanitary floor. And in a lot of cases where some people may not have, uh, a problem, but they might be contributing to the problem downstream. One of the, the most difficult things that we've had is communicating to people, um, that they might be causing a problem, or, uh, to those people that have, uh, experienced problems, perhaps they'll call their insurance agent before they call the city. We have a hard time finding out about these things. If there are some claims that are outstanding, uh, perhaps we should let them go through the process, um, but I appreciate the, the comment that, you know, we could do a better job of informing people that there are these types of programs out there that they can avail themselves to, and they can help themselves, quite frankly. You know, uh, I will bring back a report, uh, in, uh, in the new year that talks about upgrades to the, the RAP program. In two thousand and thirteen, we set aside three hundred thousand dollars, and I know that the commitments that we've made for the improvement so far have exceeded that amount, um, so we're gonna be looking to top that up again. There is some unique circumstances in, in this particular section of our sewer system, where we've got some inline storage, uh, there have been some maintenance issues, you may recall the discussion we had here perhaps a couple of years ago, talking about, uh, people dumping fat, oil, and grease into the system, which clogs up and reduces the capacity to handle, uh, uh, the flow to go through. And then, again, you have to keep in mind the context in which, you know, the July nineteenth storm, um, even if we had ideal conditions and, uh, disconnected, uh, sewers, I still couldn't stand here and guarantee that we wouldn't have some surcharging and basement flooding in the system, because there is finite capacity there. Perhaps, uh, if I could, Mr. Mayor, is offer, um, the opportunity to meet with, uh, Mr. Nearing and the residents on Fairway, if they wish to come in, we can show them how the system works, what is the nature of our problem, and perhaps they can give us some advice on how we can notify the, uh, residents in that neighborhood of the RAP program, and, and how they can, uh, move ahead to solve the problem.
Okay, thanks for that, uh, I've got Counselor Morocco, then, uh, Counselor, yeah, Your Worship, uh, well, just so to say, and I don't have a, I don't have a question for Mr. Nearing, but I just wanted to say that, I think it wasn't too long ago, we sat around this table and talked about the twenty million dollars that, uh, we've got to our coffers, and how many different ways it could be spent, and I think it just goes back to reiterate, I think it's very important, it just sets out a clear message that our priority here is, uh, infrastructure, and it is the sewer, uh, because we, we can't have this happen, it's just not right, I mean, the second time to have it happen as well, and it's too bad that they didn't know about the program as well, so I'm sorry that that's at all, but, uh, I think that just sets out a priority for this council, that where that money needs to be invested is in that infrastructure for sewer. Absolutely. Uh, Counselor Thompson?
Yes, uh, uh, as a result of, uh, Mr. Nearing's, uh, presentation, I think it's, uh, incumbent, uh, upon us to have a report back, um, I'm surprised to hear that they do have separated sewers. I think we should know, uh, what kind of, uh, uh, who is, uh, discharging their rainwater into the sanitary, how bad a situation it is, um, I think there should be, uh, uh, an opportunity to have a leaflet go out and everybody be aware, if they've had flooding, that the RAP program, uh, is available, and, uh, let us know what, uh, else can be done by this council, uh, with our, uh, dollars from the, uh, O L G to try to overcome the situation. This is, uh, uh, not an isolated situation, but it's one that has been brought to our attention, uh, and, uh, with a delegation, and I think we have to respond appropriately and come up with some solutions, so, uh, we're not standing here next year and listening to, uh, the same, uh, criticism, uh, I think we have to find solutions, so I would, uh, like to have a report back, uh, investigating all of these situations, and how we can solve and, uh, improve on the situation on, uh, on the street.
Okay, and also the, uh, uh, any, uh, report on the RAP program and how we're gonna administer it, move it forward. Uh, yes, uh, so you're seconding that, Counselor? Okay, I second that. Uh, yeah, Counselor Gates?
Uh, first of all, uh, I think I spoke on council before, that I don't think there's anything worse than having lots of sewage in the, in your house, it's never the same. Um, one thing I want to ask you is that you had two situations, uh, one time with fourteen thousand dollars, uh, what was your deductible on that?
The city, the, from the city's point of view, I've incidentally, in the last month and a half, had more contact, emails, and so on, visits from the city than I've had in forty-five years, and that's good, because it means communications are being better developed. The city has come in through a, through a plumber, and they have broken the floor downstairs and have put in a backflow valve. Again, had that backflow valve been put in there at the end of the October flood, I'd have had no problem in July. But there is another question which refers possibly to a friend there. If increasingly more of the people have these backflow valves, that does increase the pressure in the main, in the latrals and in the main sewer as well, will there now be other people that were a little higher in elevation and didn't get flooded, are they gonna get flooded? That's gonna be a moot point. But that was, to me, the single most important part of that RAP program is the, the backflow prevention valve, that is key, and that is now in my basement, thank God.
Well, I think the, the union was just commodified by your presentation, is that, uh, obviously, uh, the city's made some suggestions that meet with all the residents in that area and see what we can do, but the, the main question I want to ask is that, uh, because I've ran across it a number of times with, uh, the July nineteenth or seventeenth flooding day, is that there, there is a, a lot of people have five thousand dollars deductible, some have four thousand dollar deductible, and if it happened to you once, uh, it's not something that we save for, by the way, it's not something that we even think of, so can you imagine, and I don't know in your situation, but maybe some of the residents that situation, they had a five thousand dollar deductible, they pay, had to pay the deductible for the insurance company you're doing, and then here a few short months later, you're getting the same thing, and then now you've got an insurance problem. So it is, it is, it is, it's probably been a nightmare for you, but I think you've got a commitment from this council, uh, that we're gonna do everything we can to try to fix the problem down there, obviously through education with, uh, staff, uh, but I, uh, I really, you know, maybe I'm part of the city apologizing, because, uh, happened once, which is be terrible, I tell you I'm devastated, uh, happened twice, uh, just about been on the list, so I thank you for having the courage to come, and hopefully through, uh, educating us tonight, uh, this thing can get fixed.
Thank you again for the opportunity of, of addressing the council, it's always a privilege, and I'm happy that you're prepared to listen to some of your lectures, it's much appreciated.
Yeah, and not just listen, but also to ask, and you, you encapsulate it in a very nice and professional succinct way, and also remember that backflow valve, you have to service it, because if you leave it alone, I'm sure Mr. Holman will tell you, it can seize up, so that you have to always make sure that it, it doesn't take much to back it up.
Every year.
Every year, should service it every year. Uh, now, we have a motion before council, um, everybody, uh, you know, Counselor Thompson made it, it was moved by, uh, seconded by Counselor Morocco, we'll call the vote, and it's also, um, I know Mr. Holman has offered to meet with the residents of Fairway Road as well, to discuss your situation, how we're gonna move forward to help everybody. So we'll call that vote, all those in favor, okay, and that's easily unanimous. Thank you very much, Mr. Nearing, appreciate your time, and also to the residents that came with them, bring them support. Uh, next up is our culture plan survey, and to present, we have Priscilla Brett, Chair of the Arts and Culture Committee, she's gonna outline the City of Niagara Falls Culture Plan Survey that's currently being conducted, welcome, Priscilla.
Hello, thank you very much. My name is Priscilla Brett, and I'm Chair of the Arts and Culture Committee for the City of Niagara Falls. Um, I'm very pleased to be here to let you know about the culture plan process, and most importantly, to invite the community out to participate. Uh, the City of Niagara Falls, with assistance from T C I Management Consultants, is currently developing a culture plan to help guide the city's future investment in culture. The first steps of the process include information gathering, the consultants have been busy meeting with local cultural organizations with members of city council, city committees, and assorted city staff. The next step is to gather input from the entire community, and we need your input. We invite all residents to complete a quick and easy culture plan survey, and each person who completes the survey will be entered to win, da-da-da, an iPad, and that has been donated by B D's Basics, a big thank you to them. Um, and the survey can be found at the city's website at W W W dot Niagara Falls dot C A, and can be completed at any of the Niagara Falls Public Library branches. Paper copies are also available at City Hall, the Gale Center, all Niagara Falls Public Library branches. The survey is available until December twentieth, and please don't, uh, miss the opportunity to provide your input, because this is your chance, um, and also please keep your eye on the city's website for more updates on the culture plan, so any questions for me or for Kathy?
Do we have any questions for Priscilla of council? No, uh, we don't, looks like we're good, but we're, uh, we're very happy that you're doing the surveys, we can get the feedback of the public, so we can be...
And we're really, we're really excited, we've had a lot of participation already, so...
That's exactly what we need, and you know, every year the Arts and, uh, the Wall of Fame, Arts and Culture Wall of Fame is always so successful, and we definitely have to nurture that part of the community as well, so thanks for taking your time, to you and your committee, and the survey, we look forward to the results.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, next up is our blood donor clinic, uh, presentation, and we have our Deputy Clerk, Mr. Bill Masson, who's going to introduce this segment, welcome.
Yes, uh, good evening, I've come to be before you tonight, uh, more as a, as an employee of, of the city, uh, to speak about the Partners for Life, uh, Blood Donation Program. Um, with me tonight is Jeff Riley, he's the Community Development Coordinator, he'll be speaking in just a moment, uh, to promote the clinics that are, uh, coming up in Niagara Falls, but I just wanted to take a moment and talk about, uh, uh, blood donations and, and the success that we've had as a group of employees that get together in what's called the Partners for Life Program. Uh, the Partners for Life Program is an opportunity for, um, the employees to gather together as a group and make a collective goal. So once a year, we get together, and we just try and say, "How many donations can we make collectively as employees of the city?" Uh, the last few years, we've been shooting for seventy, and have been able to, uh, obtain that for the last couple of years, so, um, a lot of times, people are a little hesitant to go to a, to a clinic, and for various reasons, uh, donating blood isn't for everyone, and there's some reasons, uh, very good reasons why people cannot donate, but a lot of times it's just for this lack of time, or, uh, people are just a little unsure of what's involved in donating blood. I've, I've been, um, going for a number of years, my father was at avid blood donor clinic, uh, attendee, his father was, uh, luckily, we do not have any, uh, tragic stories, uh, where I've been touched, but I'm, I'm certain that there are a lot of people out there who know someone who's been in need of transfusions or, or donations, um, and when I approach people to, uh, attend a clinic, it's not like I'm asking for money, we're asking for just an hour of your time. So if there's ever an opportunity for you to attend a clinic, we can see they're posted here on the screen, and just speak about those in a moment, um, it's, it's really just a matter of... Um, it's, it's really just a matter of rolling up your sleeves, uh, heading out there and giving an hour of your time, um, and some of your blood. And certainly there are people out there who would appreciate that. Uh, what's involved in, in a clinic, you're really, you know, if you're feeling well that day, um, you go in and you see a nurse and she'll take your blood pressure and, uh, your temperature and, uh, ask you a few questions about your health. And it's really just taking one hour of your time, uh, to make that donation. It's, uh, the nice thing about going as a group, especially with employees of the City of Niagara Falls, is that, uh, it gives you an opportunity to perhaps attend with someone else. So, if you're a little unsure about what's involved, uh, you know, people can contact me here, uh, at the city and I'd certainly go out to a clinic, uh, with them as well. So, um, I'll introduce Jeff. Uh, ironically, I see next on the agenda, the Ann Meyer football team is going to be, uh, introduced. And Jeff and I are Meyer grads, much like, much like the mayor. So, it was great to see those kids out in the hall, we'll see those, those guys in a few minutes. So, uh, if I just call Jeff, um, Jeff Ryle is the Community Development Coordinator with Canadian Blood Services. And he's just gonna speak briefly about the clinic.
Thanks very much, Bill.
Thank you.
Welcome, Jeff.
Thank you, Bill, thank you. Uh, Bill is a terrific ambassador for Canadian Blood Services. Uh, as you mentioned, he's a, a longtime donor. He just celebrated, uh, very low-key, if you know Bill, he's celebrated in a low-key manner, his seventy-fifth donation. We generally recognize, uh, these sort of things. Um, and he does a very good job promoting it internally. My job as a Community Development Coordinator is to promote the clinics and make sure they're well attended. Uh, as you all know, there is always a need for blood, it never goes away. There are times of the year when it's, uh, a little more difficult for us, a little more challenging to get our quota. Uh, heading into the holidays, i- it's one of those times when it's more difficult. It's not that people, uh, just decide not to. As you all know, we get very busy, uh, and, and people just lose track of that time that Bill mentioned. It's one hour every two months and we always need the blood, we always need people making donations. And over the holidays, people generally lose track of time, get busier and aren't able to make those donations. So, we make a special attempt at this time of year to remind our Partners for Life to come on out, uh, encourage each other and come on out and make those donations. So, I've got two dates on the screen there in particular, they're the ones that are happening in Niagara Falls in December. Uh, they happen in Niagara Falls twice a month all year long. But I want to draw attention specifically to the two over the holidays because those are key times for us. Um, not everybody can donate, as Bill mentioned, and that's okay. I don't let anybody off the hook, though. If you can't donate, I ask you to help promote. Uh, and if you can't really help promote too much, get your buddy or your spouse or a friend, a neighbor to donate on your behalf. So, we want everybody, my goal is to have everybody helping one way or another, either by donating or by helping raise awareness or, or by getting someone else to donate. Uh, so again, these are the two dates in particular. Um, Bill was mentioning the Partners for Life, there's a quota of seventy. Every year it's a pledge, um, that Bill and the Canadian Blood Services get together and talk and figure out a number. Seventy for this year. Heading into the final two clinics of the year, the number is at fifty-eight. So, we've got two clinics to get twelve more donations and you make your pledge. Uh, it's good for us if you make your pledge, nice for you guys if you make your pledge because, uh, we recognize that and thank you. Um, your, your contribution goes immediately to people in the community within five days. The blood donated in Niagara Falls is used in local hospitals. Uh, so that's always a, a nice point for people that are making their donations. I'm repeating myself to you, Mr. Mayor, we, we went over this last week. But, uh, I think, I think that's it for me.
Are there any questions of, uh, council for, for Jeff? Uh, Jeff did the same presentation at the region last, uh, last Thursday. So, he's just, uh, made the pledge, obviously the twenty-first of September, the, uh, sorry, of December. And the thirtieth of December, uh, is your opportunity. And that is going to be at the Worship Center on Frederica in Dorchester, used to be at the Optimist. Uh, any questions or comments for Jeff? No? Well, seeing none, uh, thank you very much. We appreciate the support of you and for Bill and good luck on, and good job on your seventy-five and, and, uh, hopefully we'll, we'll hit the target of the pledge.
Thank you, I'm sure you-
Go Marauders, go.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The C A O has a bit of an issue because he's a Stanford grad, so anytime he sees the color purple, he sees red. So, does it ring a? There it is. Okay, next up, we have the Ann Meyer football team. So, we're gonna bring them all inside and, uh, and I'm gonna get their coaches to come this way. Is the team all in now?
We're here.
You all here? I see a couple sets of crutches, is that a good thing? I know, wait for me to see the other team, I know. Now, first thing I'd like to do if I could, if I could have, uh, Jamie and your team of coaches join me up here. Um, we have a certificate, what that?
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
Yeah, we'll do the picture first, that's a great idea, thanks, guys. Um, because don't tell, we're not all gonna fit this little horseshoe and that actually looks pretty good. So, if someone wants to- They're still coming? Okay, well, we'll watch the family. Right, now, I don't know, wants to take a photo, why don't you come on this side? You come here and shoot this way and, uh, we'll take a picture, it's a pretty decent shot. Oh, why, what's yours, cameras?
There's, there's so many, uh, people, we might have to pass them.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, do you wanna sit down here and help them or?
Well, here's my, does everybody out there?
Is everyone in? Yeah, I was thinking about the camera. Your background?
Yeah, you know what, I'll play the part, thank you for playing here.
Council want to come up here? For the team picture?
Okay, we're gonna, anyone that wants to take a picture of, of the championship, Metro Bowl, Ann Meyer Marauders, first time ever, just getting Niagara Falls. How are they, hey, first of all? We're gonna say some words, we're gonna present the certificates, we're gonna congratulate you in a way you deserve to be. But just before that, we're gonna have a photo op. So, if anyone has a camera, you want to take, you can go right into the horseshoe. And then what we'll do, let these group take theirs, they can kinda move up and the next group come in. And then at each give, we're gonna go through the order, um, is it up to medical and we have them?
No, I'm a miracle.
We're doing miracles, yeah. So, we're gonna miraculously give out the certificates. So, if you know the number of your son, then, or your grandson or your whatever it is, you can coordinate so you get a nice shot. So, don't worry, we'll make sure we're not gonna rush yet, you can get your shots, it is really, really important. So, why don't we start with photo ops with those that are here now and then we'll rotate groups.
Okay, so we're council, or is it?
Uh, well, if they want, uh, you get plenty of something, I'll, I'll, well, then, well, the council, come on, council, come to you, everybody, all of them.
The head council wants to sit down. And then how we're gonna do it is we'll start at this side and all this point and you're getting up and taking a couple of pictures and we'll go around. Otherwise, people look at all the contractions, right? You guys will start over here, take pictures and then we work your way around. Right, sorry, I'm looking right here. Okay, everyone's ready?
We're looking to the center, we're looking to the horseshoe right now.
Yep. Okay, and we're gonna start over here. Pictures. Wait, 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 wait.
Now, we're gonna put this way, this way. Now, does anybody else want to hear that one? So, this way? No, or is that, is nobody else? Okay.
Okay.
Okay, we can start, we can start. If I could have your attention, please. Now, very proud moment, especially as, uh, an Ann Meyer alumni. Our C A O is a Stanford guy and he loves when they talk about Meyer. And, uh, just before I do, I just wanna say a quick funny story. You see, Ralph Shaw, Ralph? Another Ann Meyer grad. Uh, anyway, uh, yeah, sorry, uh, our C A O, just, we gotta rub it in just a little bit, right, guys? First time ever, first time ever, Niagara Falls team goes and wins the Metro Bowl. We're very, very proud of you, very, very proud, all of us, all the council, all the city, all of us. You guys kept the purple trout, you got outstanding coaching and playing, and we're gonna hear that in seconds from your, your coaches. And I'm gonna read this, but quick story for you guys, uh, Ralph. And Ralph probably doesn't remember this story. But back in around nineteen eighty, eighty-one, I was, uh, just starting grade ninety wrestling. I was like a hundred and thirty-four pounds at that time, hard to believe, but I was that weight one time. And, and Ralph was, who ran twelve or thirteen, and he's a big guy, you can tell. And so, I just walked into the change room and he's coming around the corner and that's my first wrestling trial. I don't realize, you know, how it works and whatnot, and I bumped into him and, you know, twice my size. And I looked at him, I thought, right away, I didn't know whether I should, you know, run or what I should do at this point. I said, "Do you wanna wrestle him?" And of course, this is the only thing I could think of at that moment. Uh, "How tall are you?" You know, yeah, that is a real good one. And, uh, and of course, he had a real smart comment, he said something like, uh, "Five foot eighteen." You know, and, uh, yeah, just like you guys, I just peeked the blank stare and I went in the change room and luckily I found out that. I never, ever had to wrestle that guy, could say. He's busy in the unlimited category, beating guys up, so I had two hundred pounds on. So, anyway, big chance, Niagara Falls guy grad, C F L chance. We're proud of you, and thanks for you being a part of, supporting these guys any way that you can, well.
I can claim victory over Ralph. Yeah, he used to wrestle when he was seven years old, he lived next door to him.
And he wants to talk to you after the meeting. Now, I wanna read this a little quickly here, uh, this award tonight. The sea, the season, the Ann Meyer Junior Football Team became the first ever Niagara Falls school to win a Metro Bowl football championship. In just their fourth year back in the Junior League, after a fifteen-year absence, the Marauders had an undefeated ten-and-oh season to claim the title. Along the way, the Marauders won the Niagara Regional Championships over the undefeated Dennis Morris Redmen from St. Castle. They defeated the twenty-eleven Metro Bowl Championship team, the eight-and-oh Assumption College Lions from Branson. They defeated the twenty-two thousand and five Metro Bowl champion, Assumption College Crusaders for the Metro Bowl Southeast Conference Championship. In the Metro Bowl final, the team defeated the nine-and-oh Durham champion, Montsenir Paul Dwyer from Oshawa by a score of forty-five to twenty-one. The twenty-thirteen Marauder Junior Football Team possessed an exceptional combination of talent, depth, commitment and heart. The team scored a staggering four-hundred-and-eighteen points while allowing only sixty-two on the season. Coach Bobby Ford's defense, Coach Rob Colosimo's offense, offense were the best in the province all season long. The boys from Meyer showed their incredible courage and heart when it mattered the most, battling high winds, snow, injuries and a thrilling last-second comeback and an overtime victory in the Metro Bowl semifinal game. The season marked a return to glory for Marauder's football. The program once competed in seventeen Niagara Junior Championships in an eighteen-year period. Where's the C A O, is he listening to this? Their twenty-thirteen team now becomes the first Metro Bowl champion in Ann Meyer and Niagara Falls history. And I'd now like to call up the coach, Mr. Jamie French, to help me with these awards. And Jamie, maybe you can give, offer some words to the inspirational team, which means we're gonna have a good senior program. There's a lot of good things happening at Ann Meyer, so maybe you can share some words.
It's better there, it's better there, Mr. Mayor, that Meyer football class. So, uh, we, we plan to make a lot of noise for a few years to come, yeah, so. Uh, just briefly, all I'd like to say is that it's just been such a great group of young men, to be around all season long. That, you know, this is a season of life, it's a much longer than normal and I've enjoyed every day of it. Because they're not just tremendous athletes, but a great group of young men, they're just huge and, uh, they're, they're just, just wonderful role models. So, I'm just very proud of, uh, of the boys and everything they've done, coaching staff, everybody pulled together, just did a phenomenal job.
It's funny, uh, now, all these years later, you know, that all the parents, I feel like my parents, you know, I know the parents, I know, uh, you're, you're telling your, uh, the tale of your age. But what we're gonna do now, uh, we're, we've got certificates that we're hand signing, every one of them, for every one of you. It's our small way of saying thank you and saying congratulations, saying we're very, very proud of you. And, you know, this is gonna be a little bit of a character building for you. This is something you're gonna say throughout your life, that's gonna help you remember the success that you achieved in the province. I mean, you made it to the top of your game, you shall be very proud of it. We'll be very curious to follow all of your careers academically and as well on the field. So, uh, we're now gonna go through the list and, um, I'm gonna let, uh, our, uh, coach, Coach Jamie, you can call him up. And we're gonna call one up at a time, we'll give you your certificate. And, uh, if your family have, wanna take a picture, then we can do just that. And we're gonna do, uh, anywhere in particular, why don't you give us a suggestion? Do we do that here, do we bring them one at a time?
I, I think I do.
Bring them up here? Okay, you know what we're gonna do? Okay, first up, first, uh, certificate that we'd like to do, of course, is for- First, uh, certificate that we'd like to do, of course, is for Coach Jamie French. Oh, we got it? Okay, good. And, uh, the coach is gonna call up first his coaches, then his players, we'll bring them up one at a time, we'll do a group, uh, we'll do an individual shot, so, remember Dad, whoever's got the, uh, camera. And remember, post them, Facebook, tweet them, connect with us, so we can share them all around.
Defensive coordinator, Rob Colosmo. Defensive coordinator, Bobby Ford.
Uh, assistant coach, Miles. Yeah. I like the purple ties, your coaches too, that was good.
Assistant coach, Derek Sun. Back quarterback, number one, Trey Ford.
Since you guys know the number we're doing, the next guy could get ready, say hello. So, see the coach, kind of sure? All the coaches, they don't mind, it's like, it's like, they're eighteen-year-old. So, we have all the coaches, some of them are big players.
Number five, Tyler Hildebrand. Number six, Lucas Madone. That wide receiver, number ten, Michael Cassiano. That defensive end, number ten, Levin Austin Potter. Linebacker, number fourteen, Ryan St. Hill. At full end, and linebacker, number fifteen, Donovan. That corner, number sixteen, Sean DeGraw. Uh, not sure if he's here. The linebacker, the racing Caleb Milbury, Caleb here. Uh, oh, okay. Eric Sun?
That is right.
That tailback, and the linebacker, number twenty-eight. Cover guy, number twenty-eight, whoever's next, line it up. That corner receiver, number thirty, Tyrell Ford. Wideback and linebacker, number thirty-one, Tyler Shaw. That's a board. That quarterback and squad back, number thirty-five, Austin Smith. Uh, don't lose some, remember Doc getting out here? Long here? Okay. That defensive tackle and defensive end, number forty, Troy Colostino. Defensive tackle, number forty-two, Tyler Quintero. That corner safety linebacker, number forty-four, Mitchell Cool. Offensive lineman, number forty-four, Ryan Montgomery. That offensive line, defensive line, number fifty, there he is, number forty-six, Dan Ward. John here? There he is. The offensive tackle and defensive end, number forty-seven, John. That defensive tackle, number forty-nine, Tanner Iannoni. Linebacker and defensive line, uh, number fifty-one, Jackson May. Offensive line, defensive line, Nico Chiockman. That offensive line, number fifty-four, Noah Satafora. The offensive line, number fifty-nine, Tate Steeber. And linebacker, number fifty-six, Steven Betz. Offensive line, number sixty-one, Adam Adorat. That defensive tackle, number sixty-four, Quinn Drew. That center, number sixty-five, Michael Bailey. Offensive line, number sixty-six, Dustin Narduzzi. Offensive line, number sixty-eight, Alex Noel. That corner, number seventy-five, Kelly Brown. That defensive tackle, number seventy-seven, Richard Buss. That receiver, number seventy, Derrick Solyam. That receiver, number seventy-nine, Paul McHernan. That receiver, corner number eighty-one, Roy Nixon. That linebacker, number eighty-three, Tal Stevenson. That squad back, number eighty-four, Elijah Glasgow. I think a lot of those are stories. That defensive tackle, number eighty-six, Jared Snayott. That safety, number eighty-nine, Brandon Baker. At linebacker, number ninety, Pierre Grisco. That defensive end, number ninety-six, Josh Bush.
On behalf of our council, we want to say, you guys should remember, keep the purple proud, use the white gear. Okay, okay, just keep the purple proud, okay? Basically, we want to say that your, your city council and your city is very proud, city's been in a long time, that actually have a team that won the Metro Bowl. And we want to say big thank you, first of all, all of your committed coaches. All of us, I acknowledge all the committed parents for being there for you. Lastly, the most important thing is, congratulations to all of you for making us very, very proud. We hope all of you have a great Christmas and wear those jerseys with pride. Thank you very much. Oh, he did, oh, let's do it right now. Well, for good luck with your game. Here we go. David, that's the last, David, that's for us. Okay, so, uh, next up, do we have our, uh, make sure we have our recipients in the room. Last, uh, order of business for tonight, before the bylaws, is, uh, some recognition. So, I understand, uh, first up is Crawford, Smith and Swallow. And we have somebody here that's gonna receive the award for Crawford's, okay, yeah, come on up here, join me up here.
He go to Meyer too.
Did he go? Pardon me? Mark Swallow? Mark?
How are ya?
I'm very good, how are you? I see you've got purple shirt off, didn't you go to Meyer too many times? It was a great thirteen, it was a great sixteen, I remember. What a day, death by valley. Death by purple. Well, what I'd like to do is, uh, draw them attention to the, to the video screen and to your monitors in front of you. And I'm just gonna quickly read to you, um, the presentation just before we make this very, uh, special milestone today. We appreciate you, Mark, for being here. Crawford, Smith and Swallow is celebrating seventy-five years in Niagara Falls. Lawrence Crawford started his charter accounting services from home in Niagara Falls in nineteen thirty-eight. As the business grew, so did the office on Queen Street. John Swallow and Bob Smith joined Crawford in nineteen fifty-eight and formed the new company, Crawford, Smith and Swallow. Today, they have seventy-eight employees, including eighteen partners, sixty associates and administration staff. Those are head offices right here in our downtown Niagara Falls. They have several smaller locations in St. Catherine, Fort Erie, Niagara Lake, Park Colburn, Stony Creek and Hamilton. Representing the firm this evening is Mark Columbi, who is a C.A. and a partner. And we'd like to offer you congratulations on, obviously seventy-five years is quite a milestone. It's obvious you're doing something right. And on behalf of the city of Niagara Falls, I'd like to present you with this plaque to commemorate a very special milestone.
Thank you very much.
Anything you wanted to, uh, say?
Thank you for, uh, having us here and thank you for recognizing, uh, this milestone for our firm. Appreciate it and, uh, have a good night, everybody.
Hello, Zane whispered, go Marauders, go.
Thanks, thanks everyone, uh, thank you.
Uh, next up, I'd like to call up our friend, Tony Doby. Where's my, uh? Bruce and Brenda? Come on up, don't be shy. I never let him bite. Congratulations. Good to see you again. Hey, we just saw, just recently, as we surveyed their milestones, what I'd like to do is, well, draw them attention to the screen again. And I'm gonna, and I'm gonna, they have their own screens too. Um, and I'm gonna read a, a few words before we get them. Now, this is really huge. This is a hundred and twenty-five years in Niagara Falls. This is Niagara's oldest, uh, florist, established in eighteen eighty-eight. John Doby immigrated from Scotland in eighteen sixty-nine and was a teacher and a principal at Simcoe Street School in Niagara Falls. He became interested in botany and grew his hobby into become a well-established family business. He built a greenhouse across the street from the current Doby's location, which a fire later destroyed in nineteen fifty-three. John and his wife, Abigail, raised nine children. One of their daughters, Eva, took over and became owner in nineteen eighteen. Eva married Colonel Vander Sloot and one of their sons, John, took over in nineteen forty-nine and built the store they remain in today. John's son, Bruce, took over the business in nineteen eighty-six, making him the fourth generation to operate the business. And of course, he stands with us right now. Today, they employ, Bruce and Brenda employ nine staff as well as five seasonal staff. And you'll see through this slide show that Doby's has had a long history of supplying special occasions, including royal and presidential visits to Niagara Falls. So, council, if you would help me in representing all the cities of Niagara Falls, congratulate Bruce and Brenda Vander Sloot from Doby's Florist on a hundred and twenty-five years at Niagara. And you see, you know, the black and whites, you appreciate there's been so much history and it's incredible to be around longer than the city. This city has only been incorporated since, uh, nineteen oh four. So you, they predate the city, which is pretty incredible. So, on behalf of the city of Niagara Falls, we'd like to offer you this plaque to recognize the hundred and twenty-five years of being woven into the fabric of Niagara Falls and the Niagara region. Congratulations. I hear pictures. Come on right up here, if you like, come right, go. Come right to the edge here. It's five hundred and ten. Is there anything you wanted to, uh, say?
Um, just a big thank you to the city. Um, we've got a great city, lots of fond memories. We've, uh, got lots of history, a hundred and twenty-five years. Uh, we were very lucky that Wendy, um, met with us and she was kind enough, we had thousands of pictures to sort through. Hundred and twenty-five years is, is a lot and, uh, uh, we want to thank you for this opportunity. And Wendy was gracious and worked very well with us and, and, uh, we're, we're pleased and proud to be, uh, four generations. And our, our two boys, Patrick and Matthew, um, work at Doby's as well, uh, part-time. So it's kind of like five generations. I don't know if they're gonna take over the business, but, uh, that's the...
Never know.
You never know.
One of their wives, you never know.
Yeah, exactly. So, uh, very pleased and proud to be, uh, representing Doby's today, so, thank you.
Well, we should ask that. That, Councilor Angel, what, did you, you wanted to ask a question?
No, no, no.
Of our historian? No? Yes, yes. You wanted to, go ahead, Councilor.
No, I, I, I just were wondering, I said, they predate the city, but they predate council.
Well, uh, I'm glad you brought that up. I, uh, I had the pleasure of, uh, when I was, uh, first, uh, hired by the health department, I sat on the planning board. And I think I must have been twenty, twenty-five at the time and I had the pleasure of sitting with, uh, John Vander Sloot, the, the father, uh, and the planning committee, who was a dedicated individual to the city, uh, for many, many years besides being in business. So, um, another connection.
Excellent, excellent, well done. Okay, now, ladies and gentlemen, uh, Mr. Clerk, can you advise there any additional bylaws or amendments for tonight's meeting?
Uh, yes, Your Worship, uh, there's, um, the bylaw related to Boys and Girls Club, just a change in the agreement itself. The, uh, term of the agreement's been amended for three months, uh, as a more of a test. Uh, also, there's two additional bylaws, uh, one that's in your, uh, handouts, which is a bylaw to establish part one on reference plan fifty-nine R etcetera. Public Highway, part of Carlton Avenue and the one I mentioned earlier as a result of in camera, which is to, uh, the bylaw to authorize the execution of a lease with Steel Rail Entertainment Incorporated. So those bylaws will be numbered consecutively, so the bylaws will go from two thirteen, one seventy-six to two thirteen, one eighty-four.
Okay. Uh, motion by Councilor Peter Angel, second by Councilor Mase, to give the bylaws a first reading. All those in favor?
Bylaws two thousand and thirteen dash one seventy-six to two thousand and thirteen dash one eighty-four, write a first time.
Motion by Councilor Peter Angel, second by Councilor Mase, to give the bylaws a second and third reading. All those in favor? Okay, unanimous?
Bylaws two thousand and thirteen dash one seventy-six to two thousand and thirteen dash one eighty-four, write a second and third time of pass.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I'm looking for the last motion for adjournments of this council, moved by Councilor...